Call to order. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular board meeting of the Halton Catholic District School Board on Tuesday, October 4th, 2022. Please note that this this board meeting is being livestreamed and will be posted on the board's YouTube channel. Tonight, we have most trustees attending in person, with a few participating remotely. In order to be recognized, please use the handoff feature in Teams to be automatically placed in the queue. For those in the boardroom, please remember to turn on your desk mics when you speak. For those attending remotely, please remember to turn on your microphone and cameras when you are recognized to speak, and please turn them off otherwise. Trustees, please remember that if you speak when you are not recognized or when you do not have the floor, your mics will be muted. I would now like to welcome legal counsel who is in attendance online. I would also like to extend a big welcome to Director Klein to his first board meeting, the Halton Catholic District School Board. Welcome to Director Klein. Would you like to introduce yourselves?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and that was my first dramatic entrance, so I appreciate you holding your applause. It let me take the opportunity now to just say thank you very much for the warm welcome, and and let me extend to you how grateful I am for being offered the chance to lead what is possibly the finest school board in the province of Ontario. It's worth great humility and great pride that I I do take this and I look forward to the the days and weeks and months ahead. I look forward to tonight as well. So thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Director Klein. Moving on to the land acknowledgement, opening prayer, national anthem, and the oath of citizenship. I ask staff to please start us off with the land land acknowledgement.
Halton, as we know it today.
Is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surrounding you greatly.
Are steeped in indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty land.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Lands.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
The negligent bank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Trustee Kuzma, could you would you please lead us in the opening prayer, the national anthem, and the oath of citizenship?
If you please join me in the sign of our faith, Father, Son, Holy Spirit, amen. Loving God, the source of every good gift, let us pray that all of us will experience a sense of warmth and welcome, and that there'll be a rich sharing of ideas, talents, and enthusiasm as together we go about our work of helping our students to achieve, believe, and belong in our board. Help us recognize your presence in one another and inspire us to listen with attention and patience, to share us share with courage and generosity, and to welcome the ideas of all. May this meeting of ours strengthen our friendships, build our HCDSP community, and increase our confidence in both ourselves and our schools. Amen.
With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, the true north strong and free. From far and wide, O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, King of land, glorious day. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee. O Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you, trustee Kuzma. Uh motions adopted in camera? There were no motions adopted in camera. Information received in camera? There were there was there was no information received in camera. Moving on to the next order of business, which is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? I see trustee Guzo, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to put in a notice of motion.
Yes, could you state, trustee Guzo, the title of your notice of motion?
I can. The title is Expansion of Arts Programming at the Halton Catholic District School Board.
Expansion of Arts Programming at HCDSP. So trustee Guzo shall be placed the ten point four under information items. Uh do I see trustee Ohan Chanara, you have your hand up? Would you like to add an item?
I do, through you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to put forth the notice of motion as well.
Yes, could you state the title, please?
The title would be Student Achievement.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. It shall be placed on item ten point five under information items. Do I see any other hands up? Okay, so we have two notices of motions. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? I have a mover. We have trustee Guzo looking for a second there. Agnew, I shall take this to a recorded vote. Trustee Ohan Chanara.
In favor.
Trustee Guzo.
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew.
Favor.
Trustee Murphy.
Favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa.
In favor.
Trustee Carabella.
Opposed.
Opposed.
Uh trustee Boy.
In favor.
Trustee Chua.
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma.
In favor.
We have six in favor, one opposed, uh no extensions. The agenda is approved. The motion carries. Moving on to the next order of business, which is declarations of conflict of interest. Are there any conflicts of interest to be declared tonight? Seeing none. We shall move on to the next order of business, which is presentations, and we do not have any presentations tonight. Our next order of business is delegations. Item five point one, there was a declined delegation. The delegation request was from QP, which was declined for this evening's meeting as it deals with an item under central bargain and goes against our delegation policies, and trustees are aware of this. Moving on down to the next order of business, which is approval of the minutes. Item six point one, minutes of the September twenty twentieth twenty twenty two regular board meeting is in our package. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes? Seeing none, uh may I ask someone to move this? May may I have a mover? Moved by trustee Ohan Chanara, looking for a second there, please.
Murphy.
Trustee Murphy moves it. I'll take it to a recorded vote. Trustee Guza.
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Murphy.
Favor.
Trustee O'Brien.
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa.
Abstain.
Uh trustee Carabella.
Abstain.
Trustee Boy.
In favor.
Trustee Chua.
In favor.
Uh trustee Kuzma.
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara.
In favor.
We have five in favor to abstain. Uh the motion carries the minutes of the September twentieth twenty twenty two regular board meeting are approved. Moving on to the next order of business, which is business arising from previous meetings. The chart of outstanding items is in your package. Uh for information, I see trustee Guzo, you have your hand up. Trustee Guzo, you have a question regarding the chart?
I do. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I was just wondering, I know I've asked every meeting, I'm gonna ask again, can I get an update on the equity audit and where we're at?
Uh thank you, trustee Guzo. Uh director Klein, are you okay with that, or should I bounce it to 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 see the, uh sorry, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh I would ask that uh our our equity officer respond right now. We were talking about that today, but I wouldn't mind some clarity on it.
Mrs. Geraman, I'll pass the question to you.
So art communication was about a week ago, and it's understanding that um uh you know, requests for interviews have been sent out and it be an interview. I'm not sure why.
That's good, that's good.
Sorry. Um so I was saying that um uh last I communicated with them about a week ago. Uh the in the um you know, requests for interview interviews and meetings have been sent out, and the interviews with community stakeholders are happening right now at this time. Can you hear me?
Teeth for that to be implemented as per.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Guza. Uh, Ms. Geraman, I think we are done with the with the answer. You gave a very good answer. So the next question was regarding the Black Teachers Union, Miss.
Black Teachers Association.
Association.
Uh the motion that it's got a date of October eighteenth, so I'm just wondering if we're in on track for that.
Okay, uh director Klein, would you be in a position to answer that, or think? Uh director Klein, would you be in a position to answer that? Uh trustee Guza, could you repeat the question?
So um one of the outstanding items is the Black Teachers Association. Uh it's got an end like a a date of October eighteenth. I'm just wondering if we're in line, if that is.
So director Klein, there was a motion for Black Teachers Union. The date was association, sorry. My bad. The date was October eighteenth. Uh Superintendent Croll, would you be aware of that?
I I am aware of it. I don't know if I can comment on it uh right now. I I don't know if Ms. Jairman might be able to help me with that. If not, we can certainly respond to trust.
Okay, we'll go back to Ms. Geraman. Ms. Geraman, uh would you be able to respond to the question?
It's uh good evening. Can you hear me? I'm gonna lean in and speak a little bit louder. So good evening. Um and so I I'm I'm assuming that you're referring to the board motion to bring back a plan for uh developing a board-wide anti-black racism strategy uh so that we're definitely on track. I had communication with them just earlier today. Uh and we're on track to bring that report to the board as a staff report uh for the eighteenth of October.
Satisfied?
I just just to clarify, have like so do we have an external consultant that has been hired to help with this because that was part of the motion?
Uh, Mr. Geraman?
Yes, and thank you and through you. Absolutely. We have contracted with an external consultant. They're on track to uh sharing the report, and we're on track to presenting at the next board meeting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Guza. Thank you, Mr. Geraman. Uh we shall now move on to the next order of business, which is action items. The first one, eight point one, uh universal washrooms. The following is the notice of motion from the September twentieth twenty twenty two regular board meeting. Uh trustee Agnew, please read the motion.
Uh thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. Okay, here's the motion. So whereas we have students and staff in our Halton Catholic District School Board, schools who have different and unique medical, physical, and disability-related needs, and whereas we have students and staff who require a vast array of accommodations to be able to comfortably and safely use the washroom, whereas we have students and staff who, for uniquely personal reasons, do not feel comfortable using the standard school washrooms, and whereas accommodations should be made for students and staff to provide access to safe, private, and properly equipped washing facilities. Whereas universal washrooms can provide barrier-free privacy and dignity for people of all abilities, including people with disabilities who may need the assistance of an an attendant or special equipment. And whereas the universal washroom, also referred to as gender-inclusive or gender-neutral washroom, is built for all people regardless of their gender identity, and where every individual has the right to use a washroom which aligns with their gender identity under the Canadian Human Rights Act. Be it resolved that the Director of Education directs senior staff to conduct a feasibility study with the goal of creating a universal and barrier-free washroom for any student or staff who requires it at each and every HCDSP school, as well as the Catholic Education Centre. Be it further resolved that this report be presented at the November first, twenty twenty two regular board meeting.
Thank you, trustee Agnew.
I I will second it.
I come to you. The the motion is in order. I'm placing it on the table. Ask me for a second.
Voted by trustee Guza.
Second by trustee Guzo. So trustee Agnew, you have the floor to open discussion in your five minutes. Give me a give me a second. Rosie, could you turn the timer on, please? Trustee, trustee.
Thank you very much. So I'm not going to, I'm gonna preface this by um stating that I am obviously not a facilities expert, um nor do I claim to be so. I'm simply approaching this um from the perspective, as I usually approach situations like this, which is we need to be um accessible always, and we need to provide every opportunity um in every environment um possible that promotes accessibility, and universal washrooms are one of those areas. So I just wanted to give a little bit of a further definition for those who may not be aware of what a universal washroom is, and then I want to make a couple of quick comments about my my existing experience and then open it up. So universal washrooms are enclosed washrooms providing a barrier-free toilet and sink and turning space to accommodate a wheeled mobility device. A power door operator must be provided at the entrance door. Universal washrooms can provide privacy and dignity for people of all abilities, including people with disabilities who may need the assistance of an attendant, as I said earlier. Universal washrooms can also benefit families with small children, individuals individuals with medical needs, and really anyone who is not comfortable using a gender-defined washroom. And these washrooms are not required to be designated for people with disabilities only. Amendments to the building code require at least one universal washroom in almost all buildings in which a washroom is required. Multi-story buildings must provide one universal washroom for every three floors. Uh this is residential, you don't have to worry about this. Universal washrooms can be located wherever is most appropriate within the building. Space for an adult change table will have to be provided in all universal washrooms located in buildings or suites over certain sizes. We are, for those of you who are out in the communities, um you have probably seen um these washrooms out where you are, be it in a community center. We actually see them quite frequently now at enroofs, um on our travels, on the highway. We're seeing them more and more, and for all of the reasons that are listed here. And for people who require um additional assistance, for people who have medical condition, for all of those other things that have been listed there, um universal washrooms can provide them with that space for their further dignity, further comfort. In addition to that, there are defined requirements around that um as it pertains to the AODA. We do, and I I look forward to facilities, um I'm speaking to this, if if that's the case, or if this report goes forward. But I I can say quite confidently, we do not have a universal washroom um at each of our locations. I have heard people say, well, we have a special needs washroom up on the third floor. I have heard people say, well, we have a special needs washroom up on the third floor. Sorry, but the fact that it's being referred to as a special needs washroom is in itself an issue. Um, it's, you know, if that washroom has been designated for that particular class, that's okay. But that's a washroom that's on the third floor. Um, so do people know it exists? Why is it being defined as a special needs washroom? Does it have all the equipment that it, that it requires, um, inside of that washroom? So is it fully outfitted to actually be, um, a, a universal washroom? Um, we can't have makeshift washrooms. They can't just be, well, we've got one component of it or we have another component of it. No, that's not good enough. If someone's going in to use that, you know, if someone has limited mobility as an example, I'm gonna use that example and they go in. You know, it's not good enough that maybe we just have a sink that uses motion sensor. The lights have to be that way. We have to have proper access to the doorways. All of those components have to be part of that universal washroom in order for it to be utilized effectively. One of those aspects is an adult change table. Um, and, you know, that is again, just something that we, that you may or may never need, but the fact is, is that it, it should be there for a variety of different reasons. Um, and further to that point, these can't be created as needed. And I think it's wonderful that our staff has risen to the occasion in certain situations where there has been a student or a staff that may have required a washroom with all of those aspects to it, like a lift, like a change table, those sorts of things. But the reality is, is that not all of our schools may have someone with a physical disability that might require that washroom. But as outlined before, it's not just for people with physical disabilities. It is for people who need somewhere to go. Maybe they have a medical issue that requires it. Maybe they have anxiety. Maybe there's gender, uh, issues, whatever that might be, they need to have that space to go to. So it's not just for people with disabilities. Um, and it can't just be created as needed. And we see this a lot with issues around accessibility and inclusion. And I'll tell you, at any given time, you may have someone in your school who breaks a leg, who needs to use a wheel mobility device, who may have to have surgery for something, who has a condition that comes on them. And those are not things that we can predict in advance. So we have to have the facilities and accommodation there for them if and when it's required. Um, and really, I don't, I mean, again, I'm not gonna give my personal opinion, um, on a, a number of different facets, but I think we need to make every effort possible to ensure, um, that our schools have this space and that this is available to those who need it. And also, I had a question that came up at Student Senate about, you know, why can't students just use the staff washroom? Well, because they're not staff. They're students and they should have a washroom that they can go to. Um, and they shouldn't have to walk through the office to go and use a staff washroom because that's the biggest washroom available. Um, and vice versa. I don't think a staff should have to go and use a student's washroom. So if we can create these universal washroom spaces, I think it would be beneficial for all the members of our school communities. That's it for me. Um, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Agnew. You went over five minutes, but that's okay. Uh, we, oh, so, uh, so we have, uh, speakers list. We have, uh, Trustee Murphy, Trustee Ohan Chanara, Trustee Guza, Trustee O'Brien and Trustee Bowie. Uh, and you have, I shall open up debate now. We have three minutes to debate. The clock shall be started. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And through you to Superintendent Merrick, if he, if he's on the line. Um, uh, Trustee Agnew briefly touched on, on the building code and, and I know there's always a, a grandfathering clause. Um, but maybe can you touch on that or give us an overview of the building code? Uh, our requirements to be compliant? And then if you could, if you have the number of how many schools, um, do you have universal washrooms as, as defined by Trustee Agnew?
Superintendent Merrick?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair and through you. Um, so, uh, the, the, the building code, uh, the requirement for a universal washroom in the building code came into effect in twenty thirteen. Uh, so effectively any school built prior to twenty thirteen in our board, uh, or even where permits were pulled prior to twenty thirteen, uh, would not have a, uh, a, a universal compliant, didn't have a previous generation of the, of the Ontario Building Code, uh, requirements in there. Um, so that, that equates for us, uh, we have eleven schools out of our fifty-five that have a true universal, you know, current building code, uh, washroom in it. Uh, the other forty-four schools, uh, would not, they would have a previous generation of, uh, whether a barrier-free or inaccessible or, or prior generations of, uh, of washroom in there. Um, and we actually have one that doesn't have a single user washroom, but we only have one. Um, so forty-three of our forty-four schools have some sort of single-user washroom in the facility. Um, but it may be, you, you're, it could be in a, in a special education suite. It could be, uh, you know, in the office, could be in the health room, uh, throughout the school. And then we have one school that doesn't. So, um, I mean, effectively with the building codes, uh, the way it is right now, uh, when you pull a permit, you are required to match the current, uh, building code requirements, uh, for that facility. Uh, and that could be through a new addition and we have many schools that we've done new additions to in the past several years, uh, that would have that, uh, uh, having a universal washroom in there, like, uh, you know, assumption secondary, uh, as well as St. Mark's would be examples of that. Uh, then obviously any new builds, um, you know, Milton Ten Sanctuary, uh, would have a universal washroom in it that just opened recently. But, um, that's kind of the state of where we're at right now with our schools. Um, and the, anything prior to twenty thirteen, uh, would be considerable work to, um, to, to, to have it meet the current code if we, if we chose that direction.
Up question?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I, you touched on it, that was the main question I had is, is to be compliant with those other forty-three. Um, you know, have, have, I'm, it's maybe not a fair question at this point because this is early times in discussions. Have you analyzed and looked at the, the possibility or probability of, uh, of making those compliant? And the other question I guess I had was, was, you know, have we looked at of those forty-three, where are they located? How are they labeled? Are, are they truly accessible to, um, to the student population?
Superintendent, Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair and through you. Uh, we, we have looked at the things we would need to do to those washrooms to bring them closer to code. Um, the, the, the real challenge to bring them up to the true universal code is that they need to be bigger. Um, to get that full turning circle, I think it's a one point seven meter turning circle and like, uh, Trustee Agnew mentioned, uh, room for a adult change table, although having an adult change table isn't a requirement of a universal washroom, but having space for it is. Um, to get that, that space, we need to expand those rooms. Um, most of the, you know, the, the current washroom locations in our schools are not, you know, there's, there's no extra space around them where you can just expand it, uh, and some would have to be expanded, you know, probably, you know, three, four, five times at their current size. Um, so then you get into a situation where you're looking at, you know, what are the adjacent uses around that current washroom? Uh, can you steal space from there or do you need to look elsewhere within the building? Uh, I mean, you're looking elsewhere, there's, you know, numerous possibilities throughout the building. I think it's really challenging to, to estimate costs. So, um, it, it really is a very unique design exercise for every single school. So all, all forty-four of those schools that don't have a universal washroom, uh, and, and, and maybe, maybe even some of the ones that do. If it's not, if it's accessible, you know, through a classroom or through a suite, um, that may be one where we'd look to have another universal washroom in the building. So, um, it is a, a lengthy design exercise to go through that. Um, so I have to, you have to say, I'm a little worried about the November first timeline. Um, I, high level statistics, no problem for November first, but, uh, to get any idea of cost or timeline, uh, there is a lot of work involved in figuring out, you know, to even get a, a number that I'd be somewhat confident in for cost, uh, would be quite a bit of work, uh, because it is a, a unique design process for each school to look at, um, where that facility could go.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Uh, next up is Trustee Ohan Chanara. You have your hand up. You have the floor.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair and to Trustee Agnew, thank you for bringing forth this ask. And from the previous conversation with Trustee Murphy and Superintendent Merrick, that's why the motion is here, I would assume, to get the feasibility study. So that if there's any other issues or any kind of roadblocks, we can talk it through it as a group, um, as Houghton Catholic District School Board does to remove any roadblocks. So I'm fully in support of getting this feasibility study with this ultimate goal and hearing the data. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Trustee Ohan Chanara. Uh, next up is Trustee Guza. Trustee Guza, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair and thank you, Trustee Agnew, for bringing this forward. Um, the dignity of all students should always be at the forefront and the ability to go to the washroom when you need to, in a place that's comfortable for you and for, for everybody should be at the forefront. Um, so I think that this is a good start in ensuring that we have it. And even if the need isn't necessarily there at the school, that doesn't mean it's not going to be there next year. So it's great to be preventative as opposed to reactive. So I, I think it's, it's a good thing to look in the future and to be prepared for this. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Trustee Guza. Next up is Trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Um, to Vice Chair Agnew, if she's comfortable with asking, answering this question. Um, you mentioned about universal accessibility. Would a student be able to use this washroom without having to justify the reason? And in other words, could, in your, like in your vision, do you see, assume, be able to say, um, or sir or ma'am, I really wanna use the universal washroom, it's just without, you have to give them a reason.
Thank you, uh, Trustee Agnew. Would you like to share your thoughts?
I can share my thoughts and this did come up, um, Trustee O'Brien at Student Senate about, um, about how this would work, uh, from a, you know, exactly to your point. And, and I don't have an answer. I, you know, I would, um, I think there's a couple of things to consider. I think one of them is absolutely, you wanna make access to this, um, this facility available to any student and they shouldn't have to explain why. But we also wanna be cognizant that these spaces not be, um, uh, you know, vandalized is not the right word, but we don't want it, that they're being misused or they're not being used for the intended purposes. Or, you know, if you have other students who are using it just because it's a nice new, well-equipped washroom. And then we have, you know, um, that, you know, truly require it from a medical or another standpoint, not being able to access it. Um, so I think honestly, those are operational, school-specific, uh, conversations probably for, uh, for their admin to have on, you know, how that's utilized and, and to what discretion. And that was the response that I gave at Student Senate as well. Um, my main focus here is, let's see if we can make this happen. What do they currently look like? How can we make them better? How can we build what we need? And then I think the rest operationally would fall to, um, the individual schools. That's my thoughts, Trustee O'Brien.
Thank you, Trustee. Trustee O'Brien, you have a follow-up question?
Not a question, but a comment up. Thank you, Trustee Agnew. That's, that's a very complete answer. Um, I s- and you've highlighted a lot of things that I'm thinking about. I'd like, just, I'm, I'm gonna vote for this. I, I really support this motion. I'd like to see it, um, a student not have to be justified, but I, I do acknowledge the, um, I won't say dangers, but the, um, the parameters that you're talking about. Um, so, um, that's what I'm saying and thank you for that answer.
Good, Trustee O'Brien. Uh, next up is, uh, Trustee Bowie. Trustee Bowie, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and through you. Um, as Trustee Agnew has mentioned, we had a very robust, uh, discussion about this motion at our last Student Senate General Meeting. Um, thank you for coming, by the way. Um, and some of the students' concerns that were brought up, um, as Trustee Agnew mentioned, were misuse of the washrooms. Um, some students brought up concerns as to how that would work, where that space would be taken from, how those washrooms would be monitored, um, who would they be intended for? We had a very lengthy discussion about it, which I'm happy to say. And at the end of it, um, all of our eight, eight student senators representing every single one of our secondary schools voted unanimously in favor of recommending the motion. So, uh, that is why we as student trustees will be voting in favor of that today. It was unanimous, which is rarely happens. Um, but, uh, it's a very good cause and our students are, uh, very much passionate about this issue. So thank you to Trustee Agnew for bringing it forward.
Thank you, Trustee Bowie. Uh, moving down speakers list, we have Trustee De Rosa up next. Trustee De Rosa, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for bringing forward the motion, Vice Chair Agnew. Um, the thought that comes to mind is the timeline for the production of the report. And, uh, I wanna, I wanna, uh, ask Superintendent, uh, Merrick, what timeline do you see as a reasonable timeline to bring a fulsome report so this, a proper decision can be made?
Lieutenant Merrick? You have the floor.
Yeah, thank you, uh, through you, Mr. Chair. Uh, i- i- it's a tough question to answer. Uh, I did, uh, talk through it with my team. Uh, their thought was to come up with a, a, a somewhat reasonable cost per school. We'd be looking at about two or three days to do a cost per school. So we have, we know we have forty-four schools to do. Um, and, and we may have to look at the other eleven as well, but, uh, that'll be a quicker look, I guess. Um, but that gives me a hundred and ten working days and it, it's, it's a lot of time. So that's, that's, you know, that's a little over twenty weeks. So, um, I would, I would also say that, um, you know, finding that amount of time in my current staff's, uh, schedule right now would be challenging. Um, so we'd probably be looking at having a consultant do some of that work for us. It would definitely help us expedite things and have people work on it right away. Uh, but we would be looking, I, I, I think to do it, um, uh, to do it in a efficient manner as well, have someone who's an expert on that. Having a, a, an engineering consultant look at that, uh, would be the way to go. So, um, I, I probably need at least, you know, closer to Christmas, maybe even into January, uh, one of those January meetings would be a, a more reasonable timeline to let us do a, 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 a good cost estimate that we could be somewhat, uh, reliable upon. And then that would allow us to, uh, provide better timelines, realizing that we are in a, you know, our capital funding, um, is, you know, kind of on an annual basis, but knowing what the cost could be, uh, and then mapping that out over a, a period of time, uh, with our, with our, uh, our incoming capital funds as well.
Mr. Chair, can I have a follow-up?
Yes, uh, De Rosa, you have a follow-up?
So through you, Mr. Chair, uh, for Superintendent Merrick. Now, without being, without committing anyone to any figure, are you in a, are you comfortable throwing out an average number? Uh, so that we can peg it and benchmark it, whether we're dealing with one million dollars, ten million dollars? Just to give us a sense of what the numbers look like.
Superintendent. Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and through you. Uh, I, I'm not comfortable throwing out a average number per school. Um, and like, like I mentioned earlier, a lot of them, we'd be looking at moving the location to a different spot in the school. Um, that requires talking with the school, figuring out, you know, what spaces perhaps we could, um, you know, take space from to accommodate this washroom. Um, and then, and then, you know, where that space ends up then determines how far you are from sewer lines. And, and then we have older schools, it could be asbestos abatement issues, it could be, you know, other services in there. So it, it, it is really unique for each design and, and where you pick that location. So, um, and obviously we wanna do a good job picking that location because we wanted to work well for the school, uh, and the occupants. So, um, I, I don't think, I mean, I, I could pick a number, but it, it wouldn't be worth the paper it's written on. Um, because there's not a lot of thought or, you know, minimal thought behind it. So, um, I think the, the best route to go, if we wanna have a, a, a plan that we could act upon, uh, would be to, to do, you know, some, some high-level design work on it, uh, and come up with a, a number that we can be, you know, somewhat directionally significant and, uh, and, and, and use that as our basis.
That is fair enough. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Just, uh, uh, a quick question. If I wanted to make a friendly amendment to this motion, when would be the appropriate time?
You could put your amendment right now, uh, Trustee De Rosa.
Yeah, I'd like to propose that the date of November the first be changed to January thirtieth, thirtieth.
Give me a second. So we, uh, uh, can you, can you restate the date, uh, Trustee De Rosa?
Uh, the end of January, what, whether that's the thirtieth, thirty-first, uh, or the last meeting in January.
Yeah, indeed. So let me check with, uh, Rose. Jan seventeen, Trustee De Rosa, January seventeenth is the board meeting, January.
And one's in the next one after that.
Are you okay with that date?
I think they need a full, a, a full January and that takes us into February, the first week of February, then that's fine as well.
So, uh, can I ask Rosie to put the motion up with the change in date? So, Trustee De Rosa, you make a change in the motion. Uh, you'll see that shortly on your screen.
Thank you.
In the meantime, can I ask for a seconder?
Seconded, O'Brien.
So we have the amendment now. Thank you on the screen. It is moved by Trustee De Rosa, seconded by Trustee O'Brien. Uh, give us a second while it comes up on the screen. Rosie, are you able to do that, or Ms. Wyndham? Oh, okay, we're waiting for Ms. Wyndham.
Mr. Chair, I can share my screen, but I will just need, I will need the, the amendment one more time because I was not in front of my desk.
The date proposed by trustee De Rosa was January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. So trustees, trustee De Rosa, you see the amendment up there on the screen. It is moved by trustee De Rosa, seconded by trustee O'Brien. Trustee De Rosa, you get to open up discussion. You have five minutes to open up discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. I support the principle of this motion. I think staff has to be given the time to come back with something that is as close to real and wholesome as possible. The very sense of what is being undertaken here, this prepares to be a significant capital expenditure. And in order to make a decision on it moving forward, I'm not suggesting that costs be the only, the only driver, but we need to understand what the costs are. So we need to give staff the time to come back to us with a real assessment. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. So we had, you have a speakers list here, but I think trustee Agnew and trustee Murphy was for the main motion. So I shall jump down the list to trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, you'd like to speak to the amendment?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I would really like to see the board move forward in this direction. So I'm, through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Merrick. Superintendent Merrick, how much more would we know in February than we would in November? As, as far as really nuts and bolts information and moving forward and actually doing this?
Superintendent Merrick?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. I mean, the, the idea would be between now and January seventeenth, that we look at each washroom individually, look at each scope of work, and then be able to apply some, some cost estimates to those, that, that work required. So, I mean, for November first, you would get a list of, you know, schools that need washrooms, and, and not much more beyond that. For January seventeenth, we would be able to provide, you know, a, a, a cost estimate to provide that work, and, and, and that would, that would help direct the path forward on the, on the project.
Thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustee O'Brien, you have a follow-up?
I do. Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I, to Superintendent Merrick. By November first, would we, could we at least get a ballpark figure of what this would look like?
Trustee O'Brien, we have amended the motion, and staff will go and get the job done as per the motion. So if the motion says January seventeenth, then that's their target date, not November first.
I don't mean for the time date. I mean, as far as amount, by November first, could we even get just a rough estimate of what the cost would be? Sorry, Mr. Chair, I wasn't very clear.
So you are considering the original motion? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I'm just wondering, do we have to wait that long before we actually can move forward? Will November first give us enough information? That's all, Mr. Chair.
Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. I think it's a similar question to what trustee De Rosa just asked, to, to ballpark a number. There are way too many variables to ballpark a number. It, it, it's a unique design for every school. So if we were to ballpark numbers, they wouldn't be much value at all because they would just be, you know, flat-out guesses. We need to look at each school design individually and, and figure out what would be in the scope of work to provide anything that's, you know, somewhat, you know, significant to the, to the, to the cause here. So it, yeah, I, I wouldn't want to fancy a guess at a, at a, at a, at a ballpark cost because it will vary drastically from school to school.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Superintendent Merrick.
Merrick, Agnew is going to use the opportunity to speak, trustee Agnew.
I do actually have some questions along this line of questioning with respect to the amendment. So Superintendent Merrick, I'm just curious, for January the seventeenth, for the returning of that report, I understand that that would include cost estimates. Would it also include time estimates? And would it also include what is currently incorporated into those existing washrooms? So we would have a sense of what we currently have? Are there ones that we could modify easier than others? So again, cost, time, and what is currently part of that? Would that be part of that report coming back?
Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. Yeah, I, I think what we would try to do is come up with a scope of work for each school, and what would be required at each one. Then, you know, the next step would be tying a cost to that. And then, you know, the kind of the third step would be trying to marry what we expect to have as, you know, incoming capital funds or capital sources, and then how we could fit that in both with our current renewal strategy, as well as, you know, any, I guess, any other, any other future builds that we have coming in as well. So trying to marry those two together. I mean, ultimately, you know, no renewal projects beyond the ones that were, you know, just finished up this past summer have been approved by trustees. So it would be trustee direction as to where you see those funds going. But we do have other renewal needs in our schools as well. So, you know, trustees would have to consider those two things in concert. But, you know, they're, yeah, we, we could, we would have to, you know, staff would suggest a path to kind of blend both accessibility needs and another kind of, you know, core building component needs in the report and be for trustee consideration. So, and, you know, I, I'm making up numbers on the floor, you know, dates on the fly here. So we would endeavor our, our best, you know, to meet the January seventeenth piece. You know, I'm, in my head, I'm, you know, thinking about consultants that we could hire to do this kind of work for us. It'd be, you know, subject to their avail, availability as well. But I think we, you know, it seems like a more reasonable timeline to get some of those, those, those items checked off that we talked about there, and, and get a more substantial report for trustees to consider.
Chair?
Yes, trustee Agnew, follow-up quick.
Thanks, Superintendent Merrick. And would there also be a possibility, and I, because I mean, I don't want to start changing motion, as part of your report, if you can make a note, I mean, is there an opportunity for us to put some sort of prioritization there? And, you know, recognizing, you know, obviously, my whole spiel was that we should have one everywhere, and we should have one everywhere, and we don't want it to be piecework when we do need it. But I, I do also am cognizant that we do have staff, we, you know, we do have some staff in our buildings who currently use mobility devices, or we do have students in our system who may, you know, need it, if you will, if that's the right term, more urgently. So would there be an opportunity as part of this report to sort of do some prioritization so that we do have a sense of, we're going to look at funds, you know, where they should be spent sort of first and foremost on this project?
Superintendent Merrick?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. We could definitely look at that. I mean, the report's getting longer now as well, but we can do our best to look at that as well. I, I know with our current, we've been doing, you know, probably for the last five or six years, going around to various schools and doing accessibility improvements. Universal washrooms was not one of those things because it, it could get quite costly. But adding, you know, signage or wider pathways, door openers, parking spaces, kind of improving some of the accessibility features in various schools. For that process, we've been working with our spec ed team on what schools they think would have the biggest impact for students and staff. We could do a similar process for this and try and prioritize, you know, similar to our, our, our long-term renewal strategy, looking at, you know, which, you know, making out a, you know, a five- or ten-year plan to do it. You know, there's always wiggle room. If there's more needs at a school, we can adjust that as we go. But trying to map out a, a path forward on, on that as well, we can, we can work on that as well.
Thank, thank you, Superintendent Merrick. Trustee Murphy, your hand is up for the main motion. Would you like to? Main motion, okay. Thank you. So seeing no other hands up now, trustee De Rosa, you get to close the amendment to the main motion. Trustee De Rosa?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I pretty well said what I had to say about this. I'm trying to give the staff the time to do a good job. They seem to be happy with January the seventeenth, and I think that's the least thing we, we can do for them. I hope my amendment will be supported. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. I shall now call the vote. Vice Chair Agnew? Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
Trustee De Rosa?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Abstain.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Trustee Guzo?
In favor.
Yes, six in favor, one abstain. The motion carries. We shall now move on to the next action item, which is code of conduct. Oh, thank you for reminding me. Forgot that, sorry. My bad again. So we shall now move on to the main motion. The main motion was moved by trustee Agnew, seconded by trustee Guzo. Trustee Murphy, you have your hand up. You have the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Merrick. Again, maybe not a fair question, but maybe you can include this in your report. Do you know of any provincial grants that, that are available? Or any funding, provincial funding that's available to upgrade accessibility in washrooms?
Superintendent Merrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you. I, I, I don't know of any right now. We can definitely look into it, you know, beyond our, our typical capital funding sources such as school conditioning improvement funds or school renewal allocation. But we can look into that.
You have a follow-up question? Thank you. I do not see any other hands up, so I'm going to ask trustee Agnew to close.
Thank you very much, and through you, Mr. Chair. So we've had a great conversation, and, and thank you very much for everyone's input for your comments on sort of the scope of work, what's required for this report. I don't have a lot more to say. The only thing that I will say is, you know, I, I'm a big proponent of experience from beginning to end. So, you know, when we take the time to ensure that we have accessible parking spaces that are well-marked and well-placed, and we have automatic door openers on our schools so that people can get into our buildings, and we widen doorways, and we do all of those sorts of things, I want to make sure that that process, that experience is carried right the way through, and it shouldn't stop at a washroom door. So in the event that we have people who are coming to our schools, that are part of our school community, that are in our schools, that, that accessible opportunity needs to be available to them, whether it's parking, entering the building, or using the washroom. And so that's my finishing point on this. I hope everyone can support this motion, and I would really look forward to seeing this report and seeing what we could do moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Agnew. I shall now call the vote on the motion, amended, amended motion. Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee O'Brien?
In favor.
De Rosa?
In favor.
Carabella?
Opposed.
Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee Ohan Chanara?
In favor.
Trustee Guzo?
In favor.
Vice Chair Agnew?
Favor.
So we have six in favor, one opposed. The motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
Trustee De Rosa?
Just a point of privilege, I may have to, I may have to leave the meeting early because I've just been called on something important. So I want to give you a heads up on that. I'm going to stay as long as possible, and then, and then leave. Okay?
So thank you for informing us. Next item is the Code of Conduct report. I shall just present it. Before I say anything else, present the motion. I shall just let trustees know that on September twentieth, regular board meeting, the motion to release the two reports, subject to vetting and approval of legal counsel, was carried out. Accordingly, a legal opinion was sought and shared with trustees. Two trustees have expressed in writing that they desire further clarification of the legal opinion provided. Thus, the motion was not satisfied and could not be acted upon. Hence, it is presented again. Given that elections are around the corner, it was a matter of urgency, and Director Crowell felt that we should bring this to the board as an action item as per bylaw nine point six. The role of the chair is to provide information to trustees and to make sure they are, they are, they are fully satisfied as per Education Act two, two, two hundred and eighteen, subsection four, and our bylaws eight point one, and not to make a decision on behalf of trustees. Only the board of trustees can make decisions such as this. Legal counsel is present, present now at the board meeting to answer trustees' questions. So I shall now ask legal counsel to answer correct questions, and trustees can please ask questions before I just present the motion once again. I shall not be speaking to the motion. I shall just present that.
We had quite a discussion at the last meeting in regards to this, and what, when particularly questioned what getting legal advice meant before the report was released. It was a reiteration of a previous conversation that the, our legal counsel had provided. So I just want to know then if that means it's in order, if this motion would be in order. And I would like Parliamentary Cappor to, to, to offer an opinion on that, please. Because I, I see it as a motion to resc, to essentially rescind, and then it doesn't follow.
So, so you're looking for a parliamentarian opinion. Parliamentary Cappor, are you there?
Yes, Chair, good evening.
Comment on the question by trustee Guzo?
The, if, as I understand it, trustee Guzo is positing that this is a, rather than a motion to amend something previously adopted, is in effect a motion to rescind. The motion was conditional. This is a judgment call to be, or a ruling to be made by the chair, and, but as I read the motion, it was conditional, subject to the vetting and approval of legal counsel. And as I understand from what I've heard tonight, that, that specific vetting and approval was not clearly made, and therefore, the motion is coming, being brought back here. Because it was conditional, and there's a question about the condition, I would advise the chair that this is a motion to amend something previously adopted and not a rescission of that motion. So in short, the answer is, I would advise the chair that, yes, the motion is in order.
Thank you, Parliamentary Cappor.
Follow-up, Mr. Chair? I, I'm, I'm going to have to talk to Parliamentary Cappor after, so I understand the to amend piece because I thought it was, it had to be in the same meeting, but I could be wrong. That being said, my question then would be for our legal counsel. Legal counsel, welcome. Hi, nice to see you. Thank you for joining us again. My question is, is when we had you join us the very first time, you offered an opinion. When we sought clarification, you reiterated the opinion. It did not change. Do you, you know, can we send out the report? Yes or no? Is there anything that stops us from sending it out? I, I don't need a could be, shouldn't be. Is there anything legally that stops us from sending it out?
Ms. Tevashenko?
So my opinion was that it's a decision that the board can make. So if the board chooses, they can make that decision to...
Thank you.
Sorry.
Tevashenko, yeah. Trustee Guzo, you have a point of clarification?
No, I was just going to say thank you.
Yeah. Thank you. We have a couple of speakers. Trustee Ohan Chanara, trustee Ohan Chanara, you have the floor. Trustee Ohan Chanara, you're on the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. To Ms. Mchenko, I do have two very specific questions that I do need clarification for. So in the municipal act, it, local board excludes us as a school board. But within the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, the Municipal Affairs Act, and the Municipal Elections Act, when they refer to a local board, they are referring to the school board. Is that correct?
Ms. Timoshenko?
Yes, that's correct.
Do you have a follow-up, Mr. Chair?
Sure, trustee.
My second clarifying question is in regards to the Municipal Elections Act, 1996. There are three bullets where local boards are not allowed to do such actions. No request for an inquiry, which this is not. The commissioner, which we don't have report out, this is not that. This is, that's reporting out on a code of conduct. And the third would be shall not consider to impose penalties. This, again, is not imposing penalties. This is releasing of a report. Have I understood that correctly?
Ms. Timoshenko?
Yes. And just to provide a little bit of clarification, those provisions are also specific to legislation in the municipal act. So provisions of the municipal act that set out requirements for code of conduct and how code of conduct complaints are going to be handled by local boards as defined in the municipal act. So they're read together. In my opinion, as I stated earlier, I didn't think that there was anything that would prohibit the board from choosing to release the reports at this stage, which I still maintain you have a choice you can make to either release or not release.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Ohan Chanara. We have trustee Carabella up next. Trustee Carabella, you're on the floor. Trustee Carabella, yes.
Here I am. Yes, I'm just trying to get my camera open. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'd like to start with a quote from the report. It says, "Accordingly, a legal opinion was sought and shared with trustees." That is not true. This legal report was not shared with me. The statement says it was shared with trustees. This is not true. You already banned me from representing my constituents in two meetings, and you continue to not include me. Am I not a trustee? It is especially egregious that this legal report was not shared with me as I am the subject.
Point of order?
Trustee Carabella. There's a point of order raised here. Vice Chair Agnew, can you?
Respectfully, Mr. Chair, the legal opinion that we're speaking about at this moment is with respect to releasing of the code of conduct reports. It is not pertaining to any of the content within the code of conduct reports.
Vice Chair Agnew, your point of order is valid and accepted. Trustee Carabella, you have a question regarding this report presented in front of us on the screen. Do you have a question regarding that?
I have a question of who did, who decided not to share this report with me? There was no motion to not share it with me. Someone decided, who decided that it was the will of the board not?
Order. Vice Chair Agnew?
Again, Mr. Chair, what we are speaking to at the moment is with respect to the releasing of the reports as per the motion that was adopted at our last meeting. Nothing else, as trustee Carabella is referencing.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. Your point of order is well-accepted. Trustee Carabella, I've given you two options, two opportunities to speak to this. I shall move on to the next speaker. Trustee Murphy, you're up next. You're on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to Ms. Chimenenko. Sorry, too many coffees today. So trustees have the authority to release the report, which we've discussed. The public has a right to receive that information based on the content of the report. So what I, what concerns me in my armchair lawyering is that it's inevitable to me that if the report is released, there would be potentially negative consequences to somebody who's in the middle of an election. So that's an unintended consequence, in my opinion, which could result. So playing devil's advocate, if that happens and the release of this report negatively impacts somebody's election campaign, what, could the board be in a libelous position where they would seek some remedy from those actions? And furthermore, then, what is the liability of the individual trustees?
Ms. Timoshenko?
Okay, so I'll work that backwards. So first of all, if you're acting as a board and you're passing a resolution that is within your ability to do so legally, you are not personally responsible for a result that might occur, provided that you have the legal authority to act in the way that you did. So I do think you have the legal authority. The other question that you asked, or your first question, is really with respect to whether or not you should use that legal authority in the current circumstances. And so I think there are a few things that should be considered before you make your decision. I think it's important to consider the nature of the reports, so what's actually included in those reports. I think it's also important to consider the timing of their release. And also, I think it's really important to consider the fact that the, there is no requirement for release of reports. So the Education Act doesn't, for example, require school boards to release the reports, nor does it require reports to be released in a certain timeframe or speak to that issue. So those are decisions that you can make as a board, and I think it's valid to consider issues such as elections and impacts that releasing a report might have. But in my opinion, those are political rather than legal issues. And so there may be political consequences, but those are separate from legal consequences. I don't think that if you're acting within your legal parameters, what you are able to do, that you would have the board at risk of a legal consequence. I think that these are political decisions, and you have to be mindful of how that might affect yourself as well as other individuals who sit as trustees on the board and the reputation of the board as well. So lots of different political considerations separate and apart from the legal ones.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy, do you have a follow-up question?
I know, thank you. That was a very good answer.
Thank you, Mr. Timoshenko. Before I go to the next speakers, I'm going to remind trustees that the legal opinion was shared with trustees who were eligible to attend meetings. Okay, so I'll make it clear to all the viewers and all our trustees that the report was shared to all trustees who are eligible to enter the meeting. Moving forward now in the discussion, I'd like to have all trustees stay focused on the report in front of us here. And a question should be focused on this, not on something else which happened or did not happen in the past. So moving down the speakers list, we have trustee.
Point of order, Mr. Chair?
Trustee Bowie?
I just would like point of clarification. I believe that this report was not sent to student trustees.
Yes, you're right. It was not sent to student trustees. That's incorrect. Thank you. Okay, so moving down the speakers list, we have trustee De Rosa. Trustee De Rosa, you're on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will pass. And reflect.
Trustee Carabella, you're on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to, I think the questions that I have are good questions, and they need to be answered. I would like to know who decided to not include me on the legal report that involves me. And it says in the report.
Trustee Carabella, I'm speaking. I have the floor. The chair will decide whether those questions are relevant. Okay? And as I said, I'd like you to stay focused on the report in front of you. Item 8.2, as you see on the screen, it's in your package. I'd like you to stay focused on that, and that only. Thank you, trustee Carabella. You can ask your question now.
How can I stay focused when I wasn't given the legal advice? It wasn't shared with me. So this report is incorrect, saying it was shared with trustees. It was not shared with me, and I'm a sitting trustee, and it's about me.
Trustee Carabella, once again. Once again, I think I was very, very clear in my explanation to all trustees and everyone listening to this. The report was shared with all trustees who were eligible to attend the meeting. It was not shared with student trustees because this was a document which was not shared in the past, too. So once again, trustee Carabella, it was shared with trustees who were eligible to attend the meeting. So trustee Carabella, I would like you to stop making that statement again. And please ask your questions regarding this report. If you have questions regarding the report, you will ask the questions. If not, I shall pass and move on to the next. So trustee Carabella, you're on the floor.
Okay, I have another question. How much did this legal report cost? And how much are we paying the legal fees for the lawyer in attendance?
Again, you're asking a question which is not germane to the topic. If you have such a question, I'd advise you to put a notice of motion, and we shall get staff working on this and find out the cost. We shall now move on to the next speaker, trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, you're on the floor.
Mr. Chair, could you come back to me, please?
Trustee O'Brien, I shall come back to you. We have Vice Chair Agnew. Vice Chair Agnew, you're on the floor.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Chair. And so listening, so trustee Murphy, you know, brought up some valid points as some of the other trustees around the table. I guess I'll play devil's advocate a little bit the other way in that if for some reason the report is not released, is that same argument where, you know, that there could be someone that's currently running that comes back and says, "Well, you didn't release it, and therefore, that affected the outcome." And so I do think it could go both ways. You know, unfortunately, and as our legal counsel said, you know, I think that's political more than legal. But yeah, certainly, they're both situations that I think, you know, need to be considered. And we're sort of sitting in the middle of those. The impact either way, I guess we'll never know. You know, if the report gets released and it has a negative impact, we won't know. If the report doesn't get released and has a negative impact, we won't know. So I'd like to see us continue with the motion as adopted last meeting and release the reports to our stakeholders. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. On the speakers list, we have trustee O'Brien. You're back, or should I come back to you later?
Yeah, come back, please, Mr. Chair.
Trustee De Rosa, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'm just wondering whether anyone recalls a precedence, a precedence to the handling of code of conduct in such a public way. I could say that this has been a public process right from the start. And I can't think of a precedence in the past with other boards that resembles this one. So I'm looking for information to see whether this triggers a memory from somebody who's been around longer than I have. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. I can answer a little bit. When we have a question, we go back to our bylaws. We go back to our policies and procedures. So we have a policy on trustee code of conduct, and it's also stated in our bylaws. And I can give you the section for reference if you're looking for that. It's.
That's necessary, Mr. Chair. I'm just.
I'm coming. I'm coming to that. So the process is very clearly laid out, and the process is there for a reason. There's a reason why it's laid out in such detail. And since it's in public for a certain reason, and that's quoted in our bylaws. If it was not to be public, it would never have been public. It would have been in camera. So, and we have had legal guiders at every such meeting, if you recall. So that everybody knows. It has, we have followed the bylaws. We have followed the Education Act. We have followed our policy. And we have had legal, and we had the parliamentarian with us all through the process, every step. So trustee De Rosa, I'm not sure whether we have, we are going to ask someone whether such things occurred in the past. I don't think it's necessary.
May I have my follow-up, Mr. Chair? I have another question, my follow-up question. So the issue I'm trying to make is that there was a, the only portion, as I understand it, that has ever been public in a process like that in the past is the announcement of the sanction. Everything else has happened behind closed doors. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee De Rosa. Again, to answer that question, just look at our bylaws. I shall pull that up in a second for you. It clearly defines what is behind closed doors and what's in the public.
I'm really talking about precedents, Mr. Chair. Your bylaws that you're going to quote at me are, I'm sure, are going to substantiate your position. I'm talking about moral conduct, and I am talking about precedents. Precedence has been a matter in whatever decisions we have taken in the past to justify the decisions. I'm suggesting to you, Mr. Chair, that precedence would be valid in this particular case. And I don't want to get into moral justification or unjustification for what we're doing because that will take us in a different direction where we don't need to go right now. So the bylaws are black and white. I'm sure they are. I'm not as familiar as you may be at this stage of the game. I'm trying to make the point that there's no precedence. there's no precedence. At least, I don't think there's any precedence for what we are about to do. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'm satisfied with my questions and my answers.
You have been heard. And the reason why we are at this point is not to discuss and debate about the moral rights or whatever. What we're discussing right now is trustees have sought a legal opinion, and they have further questions on the motion which was approved and passed. So we are here at this point in time discussing those questions and concerns that trustees have. So let's not go off the track and discuss something else. Okay, so let's move on back to trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, are you ready with your question?
Please indulge me, Mr. Chair. I'm still forwarding my response. Just please come back to me. Thanks.
Trustee Carabella, I shall now, I shall jump to trustee Ohun Chenada. You have two opportunities, trustee Ohun. You're on the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I have to say, this is not part of the job that is enjoyable at all. Our decision now is, we are here to protect the school board. We are here to protect our policies and procedures. So when we think about how we're going to vote on this, we have to remember, we've been put in this situation. All right, so by getting clarification from legal, we don't want to put the board in any harm. Is there a political side of it? Of course there is. But again, we've been left with this decision. This is part of our responsibility. And just please clarify again, Mr. Chair, that when trustee Carabella keeps speaking about not having the legal opinion, that the confirmation of understanding is there, that it was sent to the people that voted on the motion at last board. So I'm getting really tired of because we say it, it's true. So if you could just clarify for me one more time, and for everybody, the reason why the legal opinion did not go to trustee Carabella, I would really appreciate that.
Thank you, trustee Ohun Chenada. I have said this two times, and I will say it once again, that this motion that is in front of us has been voted upon by trustees at the last board meeting, at the meeting of, what's the date? September 20. At that meeting, trustee Carabella was not eligible to attend the meeting, either in camera or out of camera. So the vote was taken, and trustee Carabella's name was not on the voting list. So the report was sought by trustees who were present at that meeting, and it was distributed to trustees present at the meeting and who voted. So trustees, once again, you have the report. If you have attended the meeting, if you are eligible to attend a meeting, and trustees have questions, you're asking the questions right now. So trustee Ohun Chenada has specified very clearly that trustees who were present at the meeting had access to the report. They are not trying to hide anything from any trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, trustee Ohun Chenada. Trustee Carabella, do you have a question on this? Okay, it should be good. Once again, trustee Carabella, do you have questions regarding the action report that you see on your screen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So because I was not at that meeting, but I was, the legal advice that was sought took place after that meeting, and it still pertains to me. And now we have another vote in front of us. And how am I supposed to vote? You're asking me to vote on something that you haven't shared the legal advice with me about, and it's about me. This doesn't make sense. It's undemocratic, and I should have it. And I'd like to know who decided to not share it with me, and how...
Trustee Carabella, you're going off into different territory. There have been many, many times in the past where you have not attended meetings yet you have voted, or you abstained. The option is to abstain or vote. Okay, trustee Carabella, let's not make ourselves feel like we have been beaten unnecessarily. Let's focus on what we have in front of us, and let's move on. Stay focused. Let's be positive. Let's move on. So moving down the speakers list, we have trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Chair, thank you for your patience. Legal has been very clear that we can have the right to release this report. We have the right not to release it. And thank you, Tim Jankow, for making that clear to us. So it really resides in our hand. I keep coming back to the Oxta module 17 that talks about code of conduct, and it does say there are restrictions on bringing forward a complaint in the period leading to an election. Now, I know this is not an allegation in a hearing, but it is related to one. And I'm thinking about that Oxta statement and the wisdom that might be behind this, that someone has thought hard of the fact of releasing anything about code of conduct during an election may not be a prudent act. So I am going to follow that wisdom, and I will vote no on this, simply because I think someone has gone before us, and they've seen the danger of releasing code of conduct information during an election. Maybe it becomes inflammatory, who knows what. But I would like to, I will follow that wisdom, and I will vote against this motion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
One more speaker, trustee Murphy, and then I will place the motion on the floor, and some people will have to move that in a second. Trustee Murphy, you're on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make the distinction that there's a difference between an allegation and an investigation that has been voted on and found to be factual and sanctions that were imposed. So that is different than slander or an allegation. So I think that was the intent of the Oxta point was, you don't want to have people making allegations during that period. We're talking about something that happened previously and had been decided on. So I think it's important to make that distinction.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Now I shall place the motion. Rosie, could you just move up to the be resolved part of it, the strike struck out part? Can you move up? So trustees, you see the motion. I shall just read that motion, and then please, in front of trustees, to make a decision. That the motion number 219 stroke 22 adopted at September 20, 2022, a regular board meeting be amended as follows, whereas trustees are elected officials expected to discharge their duties and responsibilities in an ethical and transparent manner, whereas the two recent breaches of the code of conduct investigated, deliberated, and ruled upon by the board of trustees did not meet the necessary criteria for withholding details from the public. Be resolved that the board of trustees released the two reports referenced by the board of trustees and their deliberations of the trustee code of conduct breaches addressed by the board on July 26, 2022, and July 28, 2022. I shall now place the motion in front of the board of trustees. Trustees, how do you like to proceed? Please put your hand up.
Mr. Chair, this is the parliamentarian.
Parliamentarian Kapoor, am I technically right or wrong? What should be the process?
Technically, Mr. Chair, I think you will still need a mover and a seconder for this motion that you see on the screen.
Yes, yes, I was going to ask for that. Trustee...
Sorry, I jumped in.
Yes, through you, Mr. Chair. And since we have parliamentarian Kapoor on, my question is, is if there's no mover or seconder, the motion still stands. Like, I'm having a hard time understanding the amendment, because there is no amendment to the motion. There's two parts to the motion. So we've satisfied that. We satisfied the first part. So this motion then really technically is not in order.
Parliamentarian Kapoor? Can you advise on that, please? I think I've frozen. Parliamentarian Kapoor?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I've turned my camera off for bandwidth. Can you hear me now? I've frozen as well. Can you hear me, Chair?
Yes, parliamentarian Kapoor can hear you.
Thank you. Apologies for my bandwidth. The condition that was in the motion passed on September 20, subject to the vetting and approval of legal counsel, it was not, apparently not clear whether that condition had been met. And therefore, the motion is being brought forward to this meeting to, as proposed, the motion on the screen, is to clarify by removing the condition. And that is to, and it is to clarify what the intent of trustees by moving this motion, by moving this motion.
The question was, if there's no mover and seconder, what happens?
Then there still is apparently an open question as to whether the condition has been met. And that would need to be a decision, that would need to be, the board would need to decide whether it feels the condition has been met. This is one way of clarifying that decision.
Trustee Guza?
I do, Mr. Chair, because I'm trying to go back to what we had when we passed this motion originally. And that's why we included it together. And I believe we actually got an opinion on it. And I'm going to go back to the timestamp, because I'm having a hard time that we did it one way in one meeting, and now we're saying something different in another meeting. We had a whole conversation about adding in the legal piece, that as soon as it's satisfied, that we could just go ahead and send it out. So we've done that. The legal piece has been satisfied. Why do we need another motion that essentially says the exact same thing that we already passed? Now, that being said, I have to go back to the timestamp to hear, because I know we had a full conversation about, and I believe all trustees participated in that, about, because that was the amendment, was to add the vetting with legal counsel in it. So again, I have to ask, why are we passing, why are we having another motion that's the exact same on the table? It's not a motion to amend. It can't be a motion to amend. It doesn't follow the bylaws and the definition for a motion to amend, because it's not in the same meeting. So I'm really having a hard time understanding how we have another motion that's exactly the same.
Parliamentarian Kapoor?
Thank you. There are two, there are two questions in that, in the statement. One, that the vetting and approval of legal counsel has been met. Apparently, that is not clear, that is not the clear belief of everybody, because this was brought back. And we are told in the report that some trustees still had further questions. The motion to, this is a motion to amend something previously adopted, which is different than a motion to amend. The motion, the motion 219 slash 22 was amended at the last meeting to insert this clause, subject to the vetting and approval of legal counsel. And it is within the rules to take a motion that was previously adopted and at a later meeting to amend it further. And that's the process that we're following here. But to the main question, it is my understanding, based on the report that we have today, that it is an open question amongst some, amongst at least some trustees, whether that approval of counsel has occurred. And that is the question that the board is being asked to clarify today by means of this motion, or by removing the condition and making it an unconditional motion.
Trustee, thank you, parliamentarian Kapoor.
Clarification, then?
Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Trustee Guza.
So, if that is the case, under our bylaws, where does this fall in the type of motion? Because I don't see it as a notice to amend. This isn't a motion to amend. It hasn't been presented as a motion to amend. And if it is, please, I'm just, I need to understand this process.
So trustee Guza, as I stated, because, because it was a matter of urgency, and the motion was not satisfied, trusted questions, Director Crowell, at that point in time, decided to bring back to the board of trustees for a decision.
If I may add, Chair?
What did we follow to bring this motion back the way it's been presented?
Okay, parliamentarian Kapoor?
Yes. Trustee is, Guza is correct, that this does not explicitly appear in your procedural bylaw currently. And in that case, we go back to Robert's Rules. And Robert's Rules has a specific motion called amend something previously adopted. You have done this before. You have, for example, with certain borrowing bylaws, you have, you've had, taken a bylaw that had previously been adopted, and you have proceeded to amend that bylaw. You have done it with one motion, as I recall, regarding French language instruction, where you took a motion that, where a motion had been passed, and at a subsequent meeting, that motion was amended to something different. This is not in your procedural bylaw currently. However, it is directly out of Robert's Rules of Order and is a very common method, and one that this board has, is familiar with and has done during this term on more than one occasion. It's different from a motion to amend, as in, as would be found in 1017 of the procedural bylaw.
And this has not been presented as a motion to amend, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry. I don't mean to split hairs, but it's presented as a new action item, urgent, because there's new information. And it's not amending. It's, we're, anyways, it's fine. What, maybe I don't want to hold this up anymore, but this is as clear as mud.
Thank you. You're saying something?
I was saying, the first clause of this, of what's on the screen, says that motion 21922 be amended as follows. And then the amendment of 21922 is shown on the screen. So that is the process.
Thank you, parliamentarian Kapoor. We'll take it, we'll take it the way it is presented. Trustee Murphy, you have your hand up?
Yes, I think the challenge, or the challenge for me at least, was the term approval of legal counsel. And in hindsight, and with all due respect to the legal profession, you rarely will get that, all due respect to the legal profession, you rarely will get that clear answer, yes, do this, no, don't do this. Their role is to advise and to weigh both sides of it. So I think the way we wrote the motion put us in this spot right now. And we can't write in as a negative, saying, you know, against legals, we'll proceed unless it's against your legal advice or what have you. So I think that's where I had the challenge with the way the motion was written, given, given the advice we have. After we've gone through the clarification and asked those questions, you know, I'm satisfied that we have the information needed to make a decision. So that's why I would support this as being amending, by removing that clause, which creates that, that go-no-go decision, which we may have been hoping for from legal, which realistically, we're not, you don't get, right?
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Am I hearing that you're moving? I'm looking for somebody to move this and second.
Oh, I can move it, sure.
Okay.
Point of clarification?
Sorry. Point of clarification, what's that supposed to be? Point of order or point of...
Point of order, sorry. I'm just wondering, what specifically are we voting for?
So trustee Guza, we have the motion in front of us on the table. So the motion 219 stroke 22 was adopted at the previous board meeting. It needs to be amended. We're just striking out the subject to the vetting and approval of legal counsel. So trustee Murphy moves, moves that we strike it out. Looking for a second, please.
I'll second it, but I also have a question.
Okay. So seconded by trustee Ohun Chenada. Trustee Ohun Chenada, you have a question. So basically, first of all, let's open up the discussion, trustee Ohun Chenada. Trustee Murphy gets to open up, if you have, wants to do something, trustee Murphy?
No, I had, we had the discussion. So the confusion with the motion was that there was an expect, in my opinion, this is strictly in my opinion, that there was an expectation that we would get a green light. Realistically, we asked, we asked something of legal that we shouldn't have, or the way we framed it, we should have worded it differently. So by removing this, it makes it clearer what our action is to be. And we have subsequently received that information and review from legal, which should give you the information needed to make the decision, in my opinion. So that's why I would support this and move this.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Trustee Ohun Chenada, you have your hand up?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And I don't want to go around circles, but by removing this line, which I still think should have been in there, so I would stand by that, we're saying that in our opinion, that it's been vetted and approved by legal counsel, whatever that means. By removing that, that's the intention of the amendment, correct?
Right, correct.
Okay, that's all I need. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustees, I do not see, trustee Carabella, we are talking about the motion. Do you have something to say regarding that, trustee Carabella?
Yes, I do. So I will abstain, I will be abstaining, because I can't vote until I receive the legal report. And I want to know, will the legal report be sent to me after this meeting?
What is going to be, I think the motion is self-explanatory. If you look at the motion and the wording of the motion, be resolved that the board of trustees release the two reports referenced by the board of trustees and their deliberations of the trustee code of conduct breaches addressed by the board on July 26, 2022, and July 28, 2022. So you have both the, both the reports with you as a trustee. You provided those reports, and they were not released. So the motion is simple and clear, that the reports would be released right away if this is passed. The legal opinion doesn't matter.
I would like, I would like the legal opinion to be sent to me after this meeting. Thank you.
With legal, if I am allowed to do that, and if I'm allowed to do that, you shall receive that. Thank you. So we have a motion which was moved by trustee Murphy and seconded by trustee Ohun Chenada. I do not see other hands up. I shall call the vote. Trustee Murphy, favor. Trustee O'Brien?
Opposed.
De Rosa?
Mr. Chair, we're voting on the amendment.
Mister Chair, are we voting on the amendment? Or call it what you will, on the removal of that clause or that wording?
Motion, it's a motion which is amended to remove the clause.
I'm opposed. I'm opposed.
Trustee Carabella? Trustee Bowie?
In favor.
Trustee Chua?
In favor.
Trustee Kuzma?
In favor.
Trustee O'Hanlon Chanada?
In favor.
Trustee Guza?
In favor.
Vashar Agni?
In favor.
Four in favor, two opposed, one abstained, the motion carries. The report shall be released right away. Uh, so the reports will be given to the Director's Office and, uh, will be also put into the, into the motion, into the minutes of the next meeting. So, uh, if somebody requires the motion, they will approach the Director's Office for the reports. Thank you, trustees, very good discussion. We shall move on to the next order of business, which is staff reports. There are no staff reports tonight. Uh, next order of business is information items. The first item under information item, ten point one, student trustee update. Student trustees, please present your report.
Thank you, and through you, Mister Chair. So starting with, we had our first Senate meeting, uh, held Thursday, September twenty-ninth at Corpus Christi, my school in Burlington. It was a great experience for the entire Senate to get together in person for the first time in years, as most of the people on Senate never had any experience with in-person meetings. We had many great discussions, debates, and we also introduced the Senate to our subcommittees to get them thinking before they apply at our next meeting on October seventh, or twenty-seventh at St. Thomas Aquinas. In addition, we also elected executive positions for the Senate, starting with Nabi Avary as Secretary, as well as Janice Herrero as Secretary, Danica Caratau and Sophia Filbert as Social Media Coordinators, Kaylee Duar as Lead Senator at Corpus Christi, Diadipu as Lead Senator at Assumption, Tiana Kayamba as Lead Senator at Notre Dame, Sophia Filbert as Lead Senator at St. Keteri, Andrew Walker as Lead Senator at Christ the King, Rashana Imran and Zaha Adnan at, as Lead Senators at St. FX, Danica Cartau and Anusha Imam at Lead Senators at Bishop Reading, Lauren McGuire and Lauren Robinson as Lead Senators at Loyola, Emmanuel Nara and Michael Youssef as Lead Senators at St. Thomas Aquinas, as well as Nishida Pillai and Nolan Mc- McIntyre as Lead Senators at Holy Trinity. Finally, clubs and teams continue to start up at all of our schools, and many are organizing club fairs to increase student involvement. These fairs are very important for students as they provide them with not just information about what is going on with their schools, but also essential information about the many opportunities available to them, such as AP, IB, and CHISM programs.
Going on to believing, in light of the Thanksgiving season that's right around the corner, many of our Halton Catholic Secondary and Elementary Schools are hosting food drives to give back non-perishable food items to our communities all across Halton who are less fortunate this Thanksgiving. On September twenty-seventh, the student trustees alongside Chair Duarte, trustee O'Hanlon Chanada, trustee Murphy, and former interim director Crowell attended the twenty-twenty-two Oxta Central Fall Regional Meeting at the Dufferin Peale Catholic District School Board. The meeting served as an insightful professional development opportunity for the student trustees, where we had meaningful conversations about Catholic education with other Catholic trustees and student trustees in the central area. We brought back the Oxta video competition to our student senate during our general senate meeting, and all of our senators are ecstatic about that opportunity and are currently creating faith-based videos to submit to the competition. At our first general senate meeting of the school, of our school year, the student senate discussed the reformation of the Catholic Faith in Action Subcommittee, which shaping it to be a volunteer-focused committee where student senators can give back to a Halton Catholic family and create initiatives for our students to gain volunteer hours and give back to their communities. Throughout this school year, our student senators expressed that they want to focus more on giving back to a Halton Catholic family, and the reformation of the Catholic Faith in Action Subcommittee will serve as that outlet for students to give back to one another. During the past few weeks, the Smile Cookie Initiative in partnership with Tim Hortons and Project Search was a huge hit amongst our students. Our students across Halton love having the opportunity to volunteer with their local Tim Hortons, decorating and distributing smile cookies in their area in support of Project Search's school-to-work transition program offered to eligible HCSB students with developmental or intellectual disabilities.
And I will be covering our belonging section for this week. Um, at our first general senate meeting of the year, there were a number of administrative items that we discussed, some of which were the reapproval of some of our policies. Um, one was concerning equitable election processes that was passed, I believe, in the senate two years ago, which, uh, created runoff elections at senate rather than the, um, traditional voting method. The second was concerning monthly social media updates on the HCSB's on Instagram. Check us out on social media if you haven't already. Uh, and the third was a, a policy passed last year by the student trustees, which is including land acknowledgements at the beginning of every senate meeting. Uh, as well, one of the projects that is ongoing at senate and with our student trustees is a promotional video concerning the, uh, hate and bias-motivated incidents reporting tool. We're very excited to be working on that, something very important to our school community. Senators were excited about it, and so we had a lengthy discussion about how best to do so. Um, as mentioned, we discussed the universal washroom's motion, which passed unanimously in the senate. Um, also, many schools currently are, uh, celebrating National Truth and Reconciliation Day, um, as well, senate indigenous voices and uplifting the, uh, voices of our indigenous students continues to be something that we are committed to and will work towards this year. I know that we had our ad hoc indigenous education, uh, committee last year, and we're hoping to continue to work with that committee this year. The last thing that I will say is that, um, I know we didn't include it in the report, but just because I thought you guys might get a kick out of this, as part of our last senate meeting, um, we really wanted to encourage our students to look at tackling issues and open their minds as to the sort of things that they can address through student senate. Um, we did a really fun proposal writing activity, and I'll just share with you guys some of the solutions that our senators came up with. So, um, STA was brainstorming our new senate mascot, and they called a mascot company to confirm the prices. And so future facilities managers there getting our estimates for us. Um, we had Notre Dame, who was, um, uh, they were tackling the lack of zombie apocalypse, apocalypse preparation in our schools, and they proposed a new curriculum for a course related to that. Um, we had BR, who was promoting mandatory naps for high schoolers. Uh, we had Loyola, who was concerned that our schools are painted boring colors, so proposed a mural painting committee for all schools, um, which would also raise volunteer hours and money for charity. Um, and we had Assumption, which promoted, uh, Deodorant Use Awareness Day to our grade-nine students. So we had a lot of fun with that, um, and I thought I would just share that with you guys, because our students are looking forward to a tackling perhaps more serious issues throughout the year, but they're getting their brains going already.
Thank you, student trustees. I almost feel that I'm in a high school, told the report that you presented. So trustees, do you have questions? I see trustee Murphy, your hand is up. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor?
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Everybody picks on the poor, stinky grade-nines. Leave them alone. Uh, that's terrible, considering I have a daughter who's a grade-nine. Um, I just wanted to comment, so we attended the, um, the regional meeting, and our student trustees, as always, represented us so well. It's not a competition. We're not competing against the other regions, but we won. So that's all I wanted to say. No, they, it, we, we had, um, we had some breakout groups, and we had to deal with some, some fairly complex, uh, sayings and, and, uh, philosophical views on faith formation. And like honestly, it took us, oh, our table took a while to really break the question down and to, and really just understand it, where, uh, the student trustee table just knocked it out of the park. So, you know, it, very impressive. So just to say, our student trustees always represent us well, you make us proud, and it also, it's a testament to the value in our system and the faith of our system that you can absorb, break down, and then come up with, um, you know, these, these somewhat complex notions and ideas. So very, very proud of you. Thank you very much, and we're the best region. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Now the speakers list, we have trustee O'Hanlon Chanada. Trustee O'Hanlon Chanada, you have the floor?
Thank you, and ditto to trustee Murphy's, uh, speech there, um, short and sweet as it was. Um, I just wanted a couple of things. You mentioned, uh, Truth and Reconciliation Day, and, and just to plug, I, I did attend with my, one of my best friends, uh, the walk that they did at Country Heritage Park. And I fully recommend if they do that next year, they did two walks. It was very inspiring. You shed a tear when you actually listen to the music they play. So just a plug for that, because I was there myself. And could you extend that project for napping to trustees? I would truly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee O'Hanlon Chanada. Trustee De Rosa, trustee De Rosa, you have the floor? Trustee De Rosa?
Mister Chair, can you hear me?
Please go ahead.
I did not have the opportunity. I had all the intentions of attending, but I want to can, to express my thanks to, um, to our student trustees, who never fail to impress. So thank you very much.
Trustee De Rosa, Vashar Agni?
Thank you, and through you, Mister Chair. Um, so just a really quick comment, um, about student senate. Um, I, I didn't intend to, to attend. I was actually at Corpus Christi for their open house. Uh, I was being nosy as usual. I saw this great group of students, I hooked my head in to take a photo, um, and then trustee Bowie, uh, thankfully tracked me down and dragged me in. Um, but I have to say, you know, it had, it was love, it was actually so, um, inspiring and so exciting to see this group of trustees together. We've heard repeatedly at this table about student senate, um, and about the work that you do there, the conversations that you have, the decisions that are made, the ideas that are created, and, uh, I was able to witness that firsthand. And, you know, it was, it was, you guys did a great job moderating it. Um, but it was hard to rein in, you know, what was going on, and that just showed me the enthusiasm and the passion and the engagement of these student senate, um, individuals, because, you know, they would have talked all night and shared ideas all night, and, um, kudos to them. So it was just really nice, again, you know, not that I don't believe you guys when you do your, do your reports, because I do, but to see that in action, uh, was really incredible. And so I was really grateful for the opportunity, even though I dragged me and put me on the spot. Um, so continue the great work, and I look forward to what else is coming out of, um, our student trustees and as well as our student senate. So thank you.
Mister Chair, may I just respond quickly to that?
Sure.
Thank you.
Trustee Bowie, go ahead, go ahead.
First, I will say I'm sorry for accosting you in the hallway. Um, but I think we all benefited from having you there, so thank you for coming. Um, the second thing that I will say is like, I will forever be a huge, uh, proponent of our student senate. We are, have the second-largest student senate advisory body, uh, in the, uh, actual province of Ontario. The only ones that have beat us are Toronto Catholic, and theirs is open to all of their high school students, so they have about five hundred people at each of their meetings. Um, but we have a solid, uh, core senate of eighty senators, plus we have, uh, another twenty or so home senators, and, um, they're some of the greatest, most dedicated students that I've had the pleasure of working with. They do amazing things both within senate and out of it, and they're all very, very passionate and excited to get to work. I will say, I, we presented our list of priorities and the things that they expressed concerns about at our last meeting, um, and I shared that as well with, um, the chairs of the board. And, uh, it's extensive. They have a lot of things that they're passionate about and that they're looking forward to tackling this year, so I just hope that we can do them justice and, um, just shout them out for their amazing work.
Thank you so much. Uh, really appreciate the good work that you, you do with the student senate, and thanks for bringing this information up to trustees of the board. We shall now move on to the next, uh, information item, which is the strategic plan twenty-sixteen to twenty-twenty-one. Uh, the Director's Report to Trustees, year six of implementation. Uh, Director Klein, uh, passes on to you.
Mister Chair, a point of privilege, if you don't mind. Mister Chair, I'm gonna have to leave, leave the meeting. I want to welcome, uh, Mister Klein for joining us for the first time. And, um, unfortunately, I've got to say goodnight, because I'm called somewhere else, as I, as I had indicated before. So, um, good luck, everyone, and we'll talk soon.
Director Klein, please proceed.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and, uh, thank you, uh, trustee De Rosa as well for that welcome. I appreciate it. So, so through you, Mister Chair, pages twenty-one to seventy-five of the agenda that you have before you speak to the outcome measures in our four priority areas, achieving, believing, belonging, and the foundational elements that, uh, undergird them. Our strategic plan, as you are aware, is monitored via an annual survey conducted by our Research and Development Services Department, and that's led by the capable Dr. Lisa Colomore. And I would ask at this point, uh, for Dr. Colomore, ask her to share with us some of the highlights from this year's survey, and then I'll, uh, follow up with a little more about the report itself. Thank you.
Good evening, and through you, Mister Chair. Um, so as Director Klein has noted, we monitor the progress of our multi-year strategic plan with two monitoring activities, and the monitoring survey is the first of the two monitoring activities. So in year six, we invited HCSB stakeholders, so our parents, our school staff, secondary students, Halton Parish members, and board office staff to participate in an online survey from June eighth to June twenty-first. The survey asked our stakeholders about our four pillars, achieving, believing, belonging, and foundational elements. And the multiple choice questions within each of these pillars align the specific goals in our strategic plan pillars. Overall, this year in year six, we heard from one thousand three hundred and eighty-five stakeholders, and most of those respondents said that they were parents. Overall, the results for our survey suggest that we continue to make really great progress in all four of our pillars, with the majority of our respondents agreeing or strongly agreeing with, um, that we have met our targets in the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. The results are summarized by pillar in the survey report that you have in your package, and that can be found in Appendix A. I will just briefly note that the second monitoring activity is the report card, which lists the successes, and these successes actually relate to the specific goals and the specific actions within each priority pillar. And these successes are reported by our senior staff and managers. Um, and again, the report card is in your package as Appendix B. That's the update. Back to Director Klein.
Sorry, uh, I thought you had done the report. Uh, oh. Okay, back to Dr. Director Klein.
Yeah. Dr. Klein sounded good. It's important that the context of this year's report, uh, be, be held firmly in mind, and I don't think I'm sharing any big secrets with you, that this, uh, comes at a time where as we're, we're coming out of possibly the greatest challenge we faced as a province and as a country, uh, and certainly as a school system since the Second World War. Um, the two and plus years of COVID certainly had an impact on all of us. So we have a four-year plan that has elasticized into a six-year plan, and that was the story at, uh, most of the boards that I know of in the province. It is a good news story, and I know that you've looked through the, uh, the depths and the breadth of the report and the, um, the successes within it, and I would ask you to, uh, again, uh, help celebrate those as well. Despite the two-plus years of a lot of challenges, uh, our schools remained open in one form or another, whether it was through, uh, uh, virtual learning or whether it was through face-to-face learning, sometimes changing over the space of a few months, we know. We, uh, staff and families and students certainly pivoted, possibly we don't want to hear that word anymore, innovated and responded creatively and deftly to constantly changing situations. And that really is the backdrop of this report. What's more, uh, I think, certainly as someone who's coming into this board from, from the outside and, and, and happy and joy, joy-filled to be, uh, in this community, this shows that the Halton Catholic staff, uh, ensured that the needs, um, of all students, but I would draw your attention to components of this that shows that the needs of the students who are presently potentially very vulnerable and marginalized learners, uh, for example, multilingual learners, new Canadians, students with special needs, students who are struggling particularly at transition points, high school into kindergarten, with meeting learning milestones, as well as our, our LGBTQ learners, were consistently met. That's really what I wanted to say in terms of a summary. I know you've looked at, uh, this, uh, carefully, and, um, we'd be more than happy to, uh, entertain questions.
Thank you, Director Klein. Uh, we have trustees who would like to ask questions. Trustee Murphy, you have your hand up. You have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair, through you to, uh, Dr. Colomore. Thank you for your report, as always.
Thank you for your report. As always, very well presented and concise and thorough. I believe we asked the same questions year over year. Have we looked at the trends year over year? And if so, how are we trending? Are there any pillars that that show concern would be my first question. The second is, did the respondents have an opportunity to comment? And at some point, can we see those comments?
Dr. Colomore.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for the question, trustee Murphy. So we did provide an overall trend report last year with Director Daly. We haven't yet done that for this year, but we can certainly do that if that's something that you'd be more interested in knowing specifics about. And to your second question about open-ended comments, the survey did not allow for open-ended comments. However, people could or stakeholders could have submitted them to the director office directly or to my office directly. I did not receive any. But I'm not sure if the director's office did. So that answers the questions.
Trustee Murphy, do you?
Statistician, statistician, statistician. I'm assuming there would be significant impact given COVID. And it may be erroneous to draw conclusions from the trends. Would that be a fair statement?
Through you, Mr. Chair. So yes, so one of the patterns that we did see for year five, which was last year, was a decrease from the previous year, year four. So it is likely that the pandemic is affecting some of these questions, specifically ones about, you know, us being able to offer specific opportunities, et cetera. So it would be challenging to make sense of those types of patterns. But like I said, year five did have a decrease from year four. And I would imagine it's always actually also on the line. She may be able to speak to these percentages that we saw in the survey, but I believe most of them were a little bit lower than we saw in the previous year as well.
Thank you, Dr. Colomore.
You're giving me the look that I can ask more questions.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Those were great answers. And I'm assured if there was some negative trend or some urgency, you would bring that to our attention. I have full confidence in all of our reports and the numbers that you're looking at. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Klein and Dr. Colomore for presenting this report to trustees. I do not see any other hands up. So once again, thanks so much. We shall move on to the next item under information items. School update. Director Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Rosie, for putting up the the report there. Just look away. Well, going back to our earlier theme about COVID, I would guess that the last two months have been very different than last year's and the year before. Because I'm sure a lot of the updates, most of the updates were dominated by the masking and vaccinations and all the work we've done at this board to ensure that everyone was as safe as possible. So it's with a great, I'm sure, relish and great refreshment that we end up looking at things that are traditionally normal and celebratory in the life of a school system. So in terms of upcoming events, we have athletics that have come to certainly our elementary and our high schools that are traditional for this time of year. National Day for Truth and Reconciliation was celebrated last week. You would have seen many people sporting orange shirts, and of course, that was reflected in terms of our response in our faith as well. The 7th of October, which is this Friday, is Professional Development Day, and that is a Faith Day. EQAO as well. Results are, of course, we're waiting for EQAO results to come. And we don't have a sense of exactly when they will come, but we are hoping for them to come soon. And of course, that would be exciting in many regards because that's the first sort of data from EQAO we've had that's been consistent from the last few years. Sorry, I'm just following the I'm wondering if you could just head back there, Rosie. Perfect. In terms of athletics, elementary cross-country events, grades four to eight are taking place at Kelso Conservation Center. And some of you are probably aware that they have begun, in fact, today, and they will go on for the next two days. And broken down in terms of Burlington, Oakville, and North Halton schools. We have a rain date as well, although I don't think we'll need those. That's exciting, certainly. As I said earlier, National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, which we've seen the disclosures for some places on the 30th, also had Orange Shirt Day as part of that as well. So on Friday, September 30th, all of our boards and the CEC Board Office flags were lowered to half mast. Schools were provided with messaging and resources at the start of September to assist in sharing information to mark Orange Shirt Day as well. Faith Day that is coming up is obviously, it's an annual and large event. It's a great event in terms of getting behind our new theological theme as well. The Systemwide Faith Day that is celebrated this Friday. Schools have planned faith activities and liturgical celebrations using resources created by our Assistant Chaplain, Faith animator Gillian Federico, and secondary school chaplaincy leaders as well. This Faith Day will be unveiling a new theological theme to carry us for the next four years. And that theme will be for all staff, and the new theme will guide our system faith initiatives over the next four years. In terms of EQAO, provincial assessments will be taking place this year. Not always something that students like to run toward, EQAO, however, it is a sign of normal times. So maybe that can act as a little solace for those students as well. Grade 10, the Ontario Secondary School Literacy Test, OSSLT, will be in the fall of this year, November 2nd to December 7th at our schools. And in spring, we will have it again as well, so you can get to see two kicks of that. Grade nine, we have, again, this has been consistent for nearly 20 years. We have our grade nine assessment of mathematics. Again, that will be broken down into the end of semester one and then semester two. So if students are taking math at that point, they can take it in January, and if they're taking it in semester two, they could take it at the end of, in June. Grade three and six assessments of reading, writing, and mathematics have a wide berth here. They used to be much more confined to two or three weeks. This gives the opportunity for schools to maneuver around a lot of the other activities that occur at schools so they can host them from the middle of May to the middle of June. And again, that data is data that is important. It's been said that data for student achievement is like drops of paint on an impressionist painting. Doesn't give us all the truth, but together it gives us a great sense of how our students are doing, in this case, relative to the curriculum or the curricula that the teachers teach and that they learn. That is the end of the updates for this stage, and I look forward to adding more to that in the next few weeks.
Thank you, Director Klein, for your updates. We have trustees' hands up and trustees have questions. We have Vaishy Agnew first. Vaishy Agnew, you have the floor.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Klein. So before I get to the heart of what I want to talk about, I also want to mention that October 6th is World Tribal Policy Day. Don't be afraid to wear green in an effort to raise awareness for tribal policy. Sorry, that's my little plug. I wanted to speak with respect to the cross-country event. And I'm wondering, Rosie, can you go back to that slide? So I had the privilege of attending today. It was so lovely to see all of the excited students and staff at the event. It was a beautiful day. Everybody was so enthusiastic to attend and participate, and it was actually so wonderful. And, you know, staff was so committed to the day. And I wanted to start positively because I do have some concerns that I'd like to address this evening. One of them, a big one, if you look here at this slide, it does mention that today was the elementary cross-country event. What is absent from this slide and was also absent from our website is the fact that there was a Special Olympics event there today. So that was not communicated board-wide. It hasn't been referenced, and this is not a personal, this is not personal, I know it's your first meeting. It's not on this slide. It wasn't on our board website, as I said. So there's zero reference to the fact that there was also a Special Olympics event that took place today. That's extremely concerning to me. This is not our first rodeo. And the fact that that entire population of students who would be participating in that event has not been recognized as being part of a system-wide event that we're still excited to get back to in person is a concern. The second piece that I'd like to bring forward as well is that the venue that the event was held at today was not in one it was not at all accessible. I'm trying to watch my words here. It was not accessible. There was nothing about the event that was accessible. The terrain is not accessible. The access was not acceptable, was not accessible. The pathway to get to the finish line, where we had our special education students participating, was not accessible. The beginning of the race started at the bottom of a multitude of stairs on the beach, not accessible. I saw strollers left at the top of the stairs, which indicates to me that there was people who weren't able to get down to the bottom or had to carry a child down. Like I said, the students that did participate in the Special Olympics portion of it, and again, staff was phenomenal today. I actually had a tear in my eye how amazing they are with their students. But the part of the race where our students join in was, again, on a grass, either gravel or a grassy terrain. Getting to it was not accessible, and this isn't just about students in our system who use mobility devices. This is about students who have perception issues, depth perception, who may have gait issues. This is about grandparents or anybody who uses any type of walker mobility device. We have educators in our system who use powered wheel device. They would not have been able to access that area today. So I don't want to detract from the importance of the day and how exciting it was. But I think we really need to pay attention proactively to the needs of all of our students. There is not one event that should be held at our system that is not fully inclusive and accessible for all students. And further to that, even the facilities, the washing facilities at that venue are not fully accessible. And so that's automatically going to preclude someone from participating. So I don't want to overshadow this, but I have to use this opportunity, as we're discussing this this evening, to bring these issues forward. I'll leave that with you. I have other mechanisms, obviously, but this was expressed as a concern to me by a number of parents in our special education system, and I saw it firsthand today. I know that we can do better. I know that we have done better. I know that those students and that staff and community is very important to us. That was not illustrated to me today from an accessibility perspective.
Thank you, Vaishy Agnew. I shall just pass this on to Director Klein. Comment on that.
Through you, Mr. Chair, and again, trustee Agnew. Exactly. I know I don't take it personally, and I'm glad you noted that. I don't take it personally at all. And I'm here to represent what we do at the board and to lead what we do at the board. And I was glad to hear you say as well that this isn't something that you want to have dwell or overshadow all the good work that went on today in terms of supporting our students in a celebratory atmosphere and all the good things that happened in terms of what accommodations we did do for all our students. And that the Halton Catholic District School Board is really second to none in what we do to support all our learners. Having said that, we became aware of this, as you're aware, later in the day. And so, and I think it might be coming up later in terms of one of the other items. This is certainly something that is not good news for me to hear, and it's something that we would like to dig deep in. And as I think we said earlier in another item, we want to look at all the angles on that and try and get a fulsome sense of what took place so that we don't have a situation where anyone feels that they're less than or they're not part of something. So it's certainly something we take seriously and will follow.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And I will just leave you with this. That this is a conversation that gets tiresome to have over and over and over again. This is not the first time that we have done an event like this. The fact that this was an oversight, that I don't know what transpired as far as the planning piece with respect to this. But respectfully, I would ask that moving forward, any event, whether it be a field trip, whether it be an event like this, there absolutely can be zero excuse for it to not be a fully accessible, fully inclusive event. And making accommodations after the fact is also not okay. Because that means that someone's had to bring forward a concern that's had to be rectified. And we shouldn't have to ever bring these concerns forward. They should be fully thought out in advance. I'll leave that with you as you have these discussions with your senior team. Because we will be looking at what happens. So thank you.
Thank you, Vaishy Agnew. Just thinking, we should have some kind of a checklist for events. Will be planned, so something to take back. Okay. Okay, thank you, Vaishy Agnew. Moving down the speaker list, we have trustee O'Brien. Trustee O'Brien, you have the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Klein. So I met you. And so I want to say hello to you, Superintendent Cordero. Just wondering where we are with the IB, the new IB location. Have we any more input in that as to where we may consider it?
Thank you, trustee O'Brien, and through you, Mr. Chair. There is a feasibility study that is planned for the municipality of Milton to all elementary-aged or grade students in grades four through to seven with a survey through the Research and Development Department to gather rental, student, and staff perspective and interest in a potential IB program in that municipality. It would, if the feasibility study states that there is a level of interest for us to further then commence the process of applying for an IB school through the IB office in the Hague, Netherlands. Then we will proceed there. Please note that the process for application is not a guarantee. And it takes approximately three to three and a half years before we would get a full accreditation, if successful, through each of those phases. Why Milton? Currently, we have three secondary schools in Milton. The two largest schools in our board, Bishop Reading at 2,430 students, St. Francis Xavier with 1,970 students, and of course, St. Kateri, which is currently being housed in an elementary facility with anticipation of a closing of a new building in, I believe, in a couple of years' time. And we anticipate at the point in time where an IB school may open, we would be nearing 7,000 students within those three schools, which would be double any other community either in, well, the community of Burlington, at least double, because we have three secondary schools there of approximately 1,000 students or a little bit more, and one secondary school in Georgetown with an AP program already in place. And having AP and IB in the same school simply doesn't work because those courses are not interchangeable. So you need to go and put an IB school in a
Can I just interject here, Mr. Chair, just because there's a lot of information coming? Through you, Mr. Chair, Superintendent Cordero. Could a Burlington location be considered, especially a location that may be close to Milton?
Superintendent Cordero?
I mean, I think of Corpus Christi, it's under capacity anyway, and it's we certainly proved through busting Kateri at the weekend that it's doable.
Through you, Mr.
Could it be at least considered?
Mr. Chair, to trustee O'Brien. We are currently conducting a feasibility study in the family schools of Corpus Christi in Notre Dame. We are currently conducting a feasibility study in the family schools of Corpus Christi in Notre Dame to place a new AP program in one of those, likely one of those two schools commencing this September, or September of 2023. So if Corpus Christi is the selected site, and we don't know that it would be, then the possibility of both, of a school having both AP and IP really is...
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One follow-up question, Mr. Chair, to Superintendent Cordero. Superintendent Cordero, if the AP program is not considered at Corpus Christi, could that be considered for the IB program?
I, through you, Mr. Chair, to Trustee O'Brien. The feasibility study results of the survey for the Notre Dame and Corpus Christi community will dictate which one of those two schools. We don't believe we have the size of population in the Burlington community currently to be housing an IB school as a third school with specialty programs in Burlington with the notion that already we have an AP program at assumption, likely program at either Notre Dame or Corpus Christi, and then to put an IB school in the third Burlington school and not have an IB program in Milton where we have more than double the size of student population in Burlington isn't something that maybe I don't, we don't necessarily believe would be acceptable to the IB office in the Hague.
Thank you, Superintendent Cordero.
Okay, I can get back into you, Mr. Brian. I do have one more question.
So, Trustee O'Brien, just to answer your question, I think the better way to go about it is asking for a staff report. So staff can go back, crunch the numbers, and come back to trustee. That's very accurate numbers. You have a question, you have a follow-up question, Trustee O'Brien?
Just about the same issue. And then I'll be brief. Through you, Superintendent Cordero. Is it not true, though, that an IB program is hosted in a school, St. Thomas Aquinas, which is not central to all of the board, and it did house the whole board? And Corpus Christi says it is fairly central to the board. Could it not be considered, keeping that in mind, that we have housed an IB program in a very uncentral location for many years? And the Hague did accept that.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Trustee O'Brien. When we put the application for St. Thomas Aquinas years ago, we were looking at one school supporting the thirteen, or the current thirteen thousand four hundred students that we have in our district. To ask for a second IB school and to go through a three-year process, which could cost up to six or seven hundred thousand dollars, and to put ourselves in the best possible position to receive accreditation, it only makes sense to put and propose a school in the north where more than half of our high school population already exists.
Get the approval to St. Thomas Aquinas before.
But that was to, okay, through you, Mr. Chair, to Trustee O'Brien. That was to serve thirteen thousand four hundred current students. If we go with a second school, it only makes sense. If you're thinking of dividing and serving half the population in two separate quadrants, it only makes sense to put and propose the school in a community that makes up more than half of our current secondary school population.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I think your suggestion is great about a staff report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Trustee O'Brien, we had an action item, a motion sometime back to bring back a report. I think you should refer to that. Number one. Number two is we are talking about school updates. I'd like to hear, you know, everybody stay focused on this topic, school updates, and not get sidetracked with different programs. Moving down the speaker's list, we have Trustee Chua. Trustee Chua, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to Director Klein or anyone else who can answer. I know in regards to the most hated thing that students have to face, exams or EQA or SALT. I know at our previous board meeting, we did announce which subjects will be doing exams and which subjects will be doing only like assignments for final assessments. I was just wondering if that list has been publicly published apart from just being at our board meetings? Because I know when I did announce it to some of my students in North Halton, many of them didn't receive that information and are kind of unclear still what is going on. So just want an update of what's going on with that.
Thank you, Trustee Chua. Pass it on to Director Klein.
Thank you very much, Trustee Chua. And again, you are very right. I will pass it on. So I could, I'll start the answer, and I will ask, I think probably either Superintendent Del Sorto or Crowell can answer this, because I do know it's important. I bet many people are waiting on this answer, so I'll turn it over.
Superintendent Crowell?
Sorry, and through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I certainly started answering this question. I may have Superintendent Miguel Acudie, who I believe is also on the meeting. He's been the one working with subject councils on that, to make sure that each department head from each school knows which subjects will have exams. That information should by now have gotten into every classroom teacher. So I happen to be married to a department head, so I can tell you that she met with her department last week, went through that to explain that. I think any student at this point, though, has the right to ask their teacher what their final thirty percent is going to look like, and the teacher should be able to give them that answer. I'm not sure it's something that we would publish necessarily, but it's something that should be part of every course outline. I hope that helps answer the question.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell. Trustee Chua, you have a follow-up question?
Just in regards to publishing it, I feel like students should know which subjects are having assignments and which subjects are having exams. I know I tried to get as far as I can posting on my social medias, but you know, I only have a restriction of whatever my, whatever people can see. I feel like it will do a justice to our students to know which courses will be assigning assignments and which courses will be assigning exams for the final assessments. I really think publishing this somewhere, maybe like a mass email to our students, just so they're aware, would do them justice. Just wondering if that's a possibility that we could.
Superintendent Crowell, is there a reason why, I mean, what's the hiccup in publishing it?
Sure. My suggestion would be that we have the schools push out the information rather than it being done centrally, so we can work with schools to have them send it out. Sometimes when we send out things from the board, they don't get read as much. So I think maybe a more efficient way would be to have schools send it out, so we can follow up with schools to make sure that that information gets out to students.
Thank you. Thank you, Trustee Chua. Trustee Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you to Superintendent Loftmead. This is regarding busing. I notice we're still having some challenges with busing routes being delayed or canceled. In my neighborhood in particular, it was a bad, bad two weeks. And I have one parent who consistently is complaining and quite vocal, especially when I sit across from her at the dinner table. I was trying to get her to call the chair, but for some reason, she persists to ask me for answers. So I'm asking Superintendent Loft for marital harmony. What, how are we coming along on those bus drivers that were in training? And is there something going on right now in particular that is exasperating this problem? Or is it just an unfortunate incident that it's happening to me?
Superintendent Loft?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair, and I'll do my best, Trustee Murphy, and I wish I had a better response. So it is true, we've had, I have some, sorry, I should say, I have some updated numbers from HSTS, our Busing Consortium. It is true that we've hired some additional, like I said, we have the drivers in training, which is great. Unfortunately, they've been offset by either driver loss or leave of absences. So the net effect is pretty much static from the previous week. As of this week, there's been one route that has been canceled. So the majority, though, of our, well, not the majority, primarily all of our bus line, with the exception of that one, at least are still in operation. But you're correct, there are definitely delays, and it's unfortunately the same responses I had two weeks ago at our last board meeting. As much as we're trying to get drivers in training, we can't really control sometimes when we have driver loss as well. So it's a little double-edged sword a bit. We get a driver to come in, and then we are losing them as well, so.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy.
Yes, are those losses short-term or are they long-term? Do we, do we have, do you have a sense for that? Is this just a blip and we'll be okay in a few weeks? Or do we still have to recruit and fill those, or are they longer term?
Superintendent Loft?
Sorry, Anthony, Mr. Chair. They are, some of them are permanent, some are leave of absences, so they would be coming back. But I'd probably say the majority, and again, I'm speculating, but the majority would probably be permanent. So the drivers we have in training have been offsetting them. We've had the coverage, which is good. The problem that we're having is, like I mentioned before, we have those open routes, which mean we have some substitute driver, just not a permanent driver, which can also lead to delays because the drivers just aren't familiar with the routes or the students on each bus. So that creates delays as well. So even though we have the coverage, at least on a short term, we don't have that permanent driver, which would definitely help expedite the daily busing and prevent the lateness of some of our routes.
Murphy?
No, thank you. Appreciate the answer.
Thank you, Trustee Murphy. Moving down the speaker's list, we have Trustee Guzmán, Trustee Ohana Chanada, and Trustee Guzo. Trustee Guzmán, you have the floor.
Thank you, through Mr. Chair, to Director Klein. Just kind of to build off of what Vice Chair Agnew said with the accessibility at cross-country. As I've been to many of the cross-country events and some of the other things that we've held there, such as field trips, et cetera. And even as someone who doesn't need the accessibility, it's still extremely noticeable how bad it is there, as in everything, to get anywhere, you need huge flights of stairs. You need to stand or sit on grass, which is obviously not good at all for anything rolling. And it's very hard for even people who don't have any disabilities to get around, as it's, there's lots of hills, lots of up and down terrain, lots of stairs, and there isn't always paths everywhere. So a lot of the time, you are having to go across uneven ground or grass. And I just wanted to kind of show from a student perspective that it's also bad, even, not even from someone who has a disability or anything. It's still quite, like, it's noticeable how tough the terrain is to get around on.
Thank you, Trustee Guzmán. I think Director Klein has already given you an assurance. Would you like to say something else, Director Klein?
Took the words out of my mouth. It is not, not good to hear, and I appreciate you sharing that, another perspective. Again, that echoes what Trustee Agnew has given to us earlier. It's certainly something we want to follow up on, because it's not what we're all about, and we don't want that to occur for anybody.
Thank you, Trustee Guzmán. Next up is Trustee Ohana Chanada. Trustee Ohana Chanada, you have the floor.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I must have forgotten my question. I've been in the queue so long. Just kidding. I remember. It's like a steel trap. So through you, Mr. Chair, to Director Klein, who will probably delegate this to Superintendent Crowell. But I'd just like to know what the update is on our French immersion programs, because that's germane to a school update. How are we sitting as far as fully trained French immersion teachers in our board?
Director Klein, I'll bounce it to Superintendent Crowell. Superintendent Crowell?
Through you, Mr. Chair. My understanding is that at the beginning of the year, we were fully staffed for all of our French immersion and extended French teachers as well as core. I know that Superintendent Alfo has elementary staffing, as well as Superintendent Oldman worked really hard to try to find more efficiencies in terms of how we've done our staffing. I would suggest that we will continue to be challenged as teachers go on leaves, as we have been in the past. But, and I could be corrected here, but my, you know, what I've been, what I know or what I know to be true is that we were fully staffed at the beginning of the year. I can, I can be prepared to share more information in the future.
Thank you. No, thank you for that.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell. Trustee Ohana Chanada, you have a follow-up question?
No, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you. And lastly, on the speaker's list, we have Trustee Guzo. Trustee Guzo, you have the floor.
You know what? See what happens when you're deep in thought. Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. I just have a question in regard, regarding the tutoring funds. And I know that the ministry is really great at communicating and giving lots of notion, notice to the school board in dispersing these funds. But if there's any update on the funds that are received and if we're partnering with anybody regarding how those, that will be delivered, because I believe we have to use those funds by December.
Thank you, Trustee Guzo. I shall pass this on to Superintendent Crowell.
Certainly. Through you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, we've used that money in several different ways. One of the things that we've done is we've actually used it to hire staff. So we've used it to hire staff to be able to do reading recovery and also empower trained teachers as well to be able to support some of the potential learning gaps that are going on in terms of early reading. We have, we have hired a tutoring coordinator as well, so someone that is actively, as you said, working to reach out to those community partners. Believe that they had a conversation with Hallton Black Voices either last Thursday or last Friday. One example of a community partner that we're looking with in addition to the community partners that we use for our spring tutoring as well. So I would anticipate we'd be reaching out to parents within the next week or so to sort of make those offers, to make those connections, but to not only our own tutors, our own staff. One of the things that we think we'll be able to do this year differently than we were able to do last year is actually be able to deliver tutoring during the school day as well. So actually using some of our staff to go in and do some small group instruction, which we weren't able to get, weren't able to do in the spring.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell. Trustee Guzo, you have follow-up?
I do. Thank you. So thank you. That's, it's great to know. You mentioned the Empower and the reading recovery. How will that be determined on what schools will be utilized? Or is it all schools that are going to be given those funds? Like, I just need to understand so I can communicate that with others.
Superintendent Crowell?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Chair. It's certainly, in terms of like the Empower teachers, I wouldn't be able to speak to that one with any real justice, just because that wouldn't be fair to the spec at department. With regards to the reading, the early reading, the teacher teachers, though, like they're going to be working to support all of our forty-five elementary schools. So they'll be working, assigned to families of schools, and they'll be going in and working with those grade one to three teachers, specifically around a new resource. We'll be bringing more information to future board meeting around the resource that we are using to target early reading. With regards to the funds that are going to be made available to schools and access tutoring, I wouldn't be able to sort of see that process just being defined and refined. I can certainly answer that question at another meeting.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell.
Just, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Can I just maybe then, I know you can speak to the Empower, but maybe Superintendent Ballack can speak to it, because I'm assuming it's been passed off to her to utilize those funds then to have Empower implemented. And I just, I need to, I would like to understand if it's going to be in all schools. Because I know, I know some schools that actually have the program, and I know there's a cost because it's specifically with very small groups for it to be successful. So if I can understand that, that'd be great.
I think Superintendent Ballack has turned the camera on, so it looks like she wants answers, Superintendent Ballack. You have the floor.
Sure. Thank you, through you, Mr. Chair, and to Trustee Guzo. We were able to hire four Empower teachers, and each of those teachers are supporting four different schools. So what we did is we took a look at all the schools that we currently have that have Empower, and we were able to supplement those that needed the additional support and the additional period from an Empower teacher. And all of our schools across the entire system have Empower program running in them, and that's been a huge gain over the last two years. We had one system-type Empower teacher who was able to support four schools. Last year, with some of our temporary funding, we were able to increase it to seventeen schools that we're personally supporting outside of the staff that are already allocated to the current sites. And so then with the Empower, we were able to take a look at all of the schools and see who still needed some support, and we are able to provide that support. So we can confidently say that every school, including our virtual school, has at least one period of Empower that's running. We also support the cost of the training and the materials for schools so that there aren't any barriers for schools to run the program.
Superintendent Ballack, and I see Trustee Guzo, you have clarification?
If you don't mind, thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
That's amazing. That is so great to hear. Can I just ask, Superintendent Ballack, will that come back to CAC at some point for a discussion on kind of the results of Empower and, and, you know, where we were and kind of where we are moving forward, so that we know the fruit of our, of our, I can't even say the word.
Labor?
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Yes, of course. I'm happy to bring that back. And I know that we do report back some general information around Empower, and that's certainly something that we were looking to share at a future meeting when we talk about, get a little more into the tutoring funds and the partnerships and what we've done with those funds. So I'm happy to report that because it really is a success. and the partnerships and what we've done with those funds. So I'm happy to report that because it really is a success story to be able to make those gains across our system. And in terms of the other question, if I may, I would add that we've partnered with the Learning Disability Association of Halton, Hamilton, as well as Learn Style, who does the training for our CAC tech. And we're offering that support to to students as well as part of the tutoring funds.
Thank you, Superintendent Bala. So Director Klein, I do not see any other questions on your on the school updates. So thank you so much. Thank our staff on our behalf for the wonderful work being done in our schools. We have identified some areas of concerns and tried to pick them and move ahead. So once again, thank you so much for the update. Moving on to our next order of business, which is miscellaneous, oh, sorry, we have a couple of notices of motion. Item ten point four, notices of motion, trustee Guzo put for the for the notice of motion, expansion of arts programming at HCDSP. Trustee Guzo, could you please read your notice of motion?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. Whereas the Halton Catholic District School Board's pillars are focused around achieving, believing, belonging. Whereas specialized programming offers opportunities to students who would achieve greater academic success outside of traditional learning environments. Whereas the arts opens a variety of learning opportunities for students of all abilities. Whereas the arts promotes creative expression, invokes feelings, is meditative, doesn't matter the degree of difficulty or beauty, is a great source of happiness, is and is known to relieve mental health issues. Whereas the arts gives our students freedom to explore their God given talents and share them with others and allows students to run away and explore as they look, feel and perform, and lets them embrace their minds. Whereas the arts promote self-expression when some students feel alone. Even when they are surrounded by a room full of people, the arts has the ability to fill up any room. It is something chosen by the student that always supports what they think and believe and is a medium of self-expression. Whereas the arts improves problem solving abilities. The key to creativity is being resourceful and solving solving problems in different and creative ways. Students can find a myriad of solutions with a creative approach at any stage, at every stage of life. Whereas the arts allows students to engage with their community and to connect to like minded people when surrounded with and by their art. Whereas the arts improves self esteem, keeps the brain active and improves and contributes to one's overall well being. Whereas the arts allows students to tell their own story, to convey emotion, expression, and represents their inner being and thoughts. Whereas the arts has been recognized as an integral part of educational achievement and is also integral to developing students' higher learning skills. A program that incorporates the arts into the curriculum has been proven to increase creativity, improve academic performance, increase motor skills, enhance visual learning and boost higher decision making skills. Whereas we have seen a decline in enrollment at the elementary level. And whereas Halton Catholic District School Board has multiple schools that have room to accommodate new programs and initiatives that will enrich our students' learning experience. And whereas HCDSP strives to be a leader with programs that will only increase student achievement. Be it resolved that the Director of Education directs staff to perform a feasibility report on creating a specialized arts program at both the elementary and secondary levels for implementation within the Halton Catholic District School Board in the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four or twenty twenty four, twenty five school year to be completed and presented at the January third, twenty twenty three board meeting. Be it further resolved that a committee be struck to work with staff on gathering information on said report.
Thank you, trustee Guzo. There shall be no discussion on this item. The next item here under information items, ten point five, student achievement at learning, sorry. Learning gaps, okay. I forgot that word here. So trustee O'Han Chenada, could you read your motion?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. Student achievement hyphen learning gaps. Whereas one of our main foundations and focus within the current Halton Catholic District School Board, multi-year strategic plan is achieving. And whereas the ability to close and or reduce learning gaps within our school community is of paramount importance and urgency. Be it resolved that the Director of Education utilized the appropriate staff to produce a report back to the Board of Trustees on Tuesday, December the sixth, twenty twenty two. Said report should include, but not limited to, a current state assessment of learning gaps by subject. It should also include an itemized action plan with target dates to reduce and or close the gaps during the two thousand and twenty two, two thousand and twenty three school year and summer, if applicable.
Thank you, trustee O'Han Chenada. There shall be no discussion on this item. Both the notices of motion shall appear as an action item at the next board meeting. Moving on to the next order of business, which is miscellaneous information. The minutes of the June thirteenth CAC meeting is provided in a package for information. Correspondence, next order of business is correspondences. We have twelve point one ministry memos, twelve point two Halton parent for change letter and twelve point three a letter from Miss Larenko. And it's provided for information. Open question period. Director Klein, do we have questions? But before we jump there, let me just look at our bylaw thirteen point four. It says, I think we have ten minutes, two questions each. We have some time, so we'll probably go with all the questions. There are lots of questions. Thirteen point four, open question period, last ten minutes. Question, about two minutes. Okay, we have time. So let's proceed with that. Director Klein, you read the questions that we have tonight.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm just looking at the ones that are on the site that we put up earlier. Those are the ones we had, three, and then we had some more that came in, correct? So we had a series of questions that came in late in the day, and I will read them out. So the first one is our board's current field trip policy. And then the policy is identified as, I guess it's two nineteen. Yeah, and and my Latin's right. Procedure number six seventy states, accommodations must be considered for students with respect to medical conditions, accessibility, transportation, et cetera, which is considered mean to our board members. And is consideration enough? It is accept, is it acceptable to exclude a child from an event, an activity, field trip, if you considered including them? So do we generally read them out and then?
Yes, okay. So Director Klein, we answer the questions if possible.
Yep.
And if you cannot provide an answer, then we respond to the person who sent the questions, the little point, or and copy to trustee. So I think if we have the answer right now.
Okay. Well, in terms of the reflection upon that from from staff and and others who are part of the senior team, feel free to to raise their hand. One of the things we need to do is take into consideration the amount or into account with the third party provider in this case can meet the conditions and accommodations required so that the students can participate. So it's an important factor for us to consider. Should be noted that the question itself was was couched within an actual context and an incident.
Would you like staff to answer the question?
If there are any you want to add to it. We did have some some conversation around, but I think.
Any particular staff, Director Klein? Sorry. Trustee Guzo, you have your hand up?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. And maybe I am, if I'm listening to the question and I'm thinking is, what is like, what are we doing in advance of that? Like, who is actually searching out to make sure that this is available for everybody? Like, what is the process that staff use to ensure? And maybe we can answer it that way. Like, it it should be. That's what I'm saying. Like, what? Yeah. So what do we, what happens? Like, I understand that places are chosen and whatnot, but are they physically looked at? Like, what is consideration, right? Like, does that mean that, you know, staff goes out, looks at the place, ensures that all of these things are accessible for for all of our students?
Thank you for clarifying, trustee Guzo. I think Director Klein, you mentioned.
Yeah, I think in in respect to that clarifying, I would agree that I think we need to get back in terms of what policy is procedure is and what considered means in terms of action proactively, I think is what you're saying too, correct?
I think I think, but to trustee Agnew's point is, is what what consideration is done? Like, do we know right, like, ahead of time right now? Like, I'm sure there's somebody who's who's can is able to answer to say, you know, when we're searching at these locations, this is what we do.
Let's ask Superintendent Bala. Superintendent Bala, I'm going to put you on the spot. Would you have any thoughts on this? What does it mean? Superintendent Bala?
There we go. Just turn on my camera. Well, I think I would, I know that there was a subsequent question that's connected to this one. And I think that there's two parts to this question and to the consideration. And I know that some other people also contributed because, yes, it definitely applies to students with special education needs or who may have any type of accessibility needs, but it really comes down to trip planning and the guiding documents and the guiding process that schools use when they're planning any type of trip. And then what the specific considerations need to be for all of the students and any specific needs that a student may have, whether it's transportation, whether it's accessibility, whether it's a medical consideration. But definitely the principal and the school staff would be the ones that would be initiating the trip. They would be taking a look at the safety guidelines. They would be making the determination if it's an appropriate site. And what I would offer from a special education perspective is the cert is often very involved in helping support the school team as they're making the plans for a trip that would be offsite. And sometimes that it does include a cert or another staff member because it's not specific to special education. They may take it upon themselves to go to the site, to take a look at the site, walk the site, see if there are any specific needs that a student may have that needs to be considered, whether it's washroom facilities, which was mentioned earlier, whether it's transportation and having wheelchair accessible parking that's close enough to where the students would be walking because it could be some a place in Toronto, for example, like the aquarium. Also, when looking at what the needs of students are, sometimes students need a space that can support them with respect to sensory. So those are the types of considerations that I would say that a special education staff member would help support the planning specifically for a student with special education needs. But in the general scope of trip planning, the principal and the teachers, the classroom teacher would be the ones that would take a look at all of the criteria in planning that trip. And they would work with the provider to ensure and determine that they have accessible accommodations for students who would be going to the place, wherever the place may be. And other considerations when it's medical, is taking a look at any factors that may have to do with a specific medical condition and phylaxis, et cetera.
Thank you, Superintendent Bala. Vice Chair Agnew?
Thank you very much. And through you, Mr. Chair. So I'm going to say this. Respectfully, unless a principal assert a teacher has a disability, has lived experience, they don't have the they don't have the capability to make a fulsome decision on whether or not that particular venue is in fact accessible. And what I heard was is that the venue is often chosen and then accommodations are made to make sure that we can fit that student into that particular venue. So when we have some conversation moving forward, that's backwards. What has to happen is is that the venue has to be chosen specifically based on the requirements of the students that are going to be participating in that. And I'll go back to answer that consideration is not enough. Because you can consider all day long. We can consider this, we can consider that, we can consider that. But at what point do you actually say, we've considered everything and we're still going to go ahead with this? Or we've considered this, but this is the venue that we've chosen. So respectfully, consideration is not enough. What is what is in fact required is a number of different items. But one of them has to be that these these venues and these experiences and these opportunities have to be chosen by someone who has the capability to go through and do a proper fulsome walkthrough that identifies. And I'll give you an example very quickly because I know we only have ten minutes. Someone can tell me that woodchips are accessible according to the AODA. I challenge anyone to push a walker or wheelchair across wood woodchips. It doesn't happen. So that's someone with lived experience that will tell you that that particular terrain or that particular venue is not in fact accessible. These are the types of things that are overlooked often, and I've seen it time and time again where venue is chosen. And then after the fact, we try to make it work for the student. And if it doesn't work, sorry, they can't participate or they have to make do with what's available. That's not okay. It has to change. It has to be reversed.
Thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. So question, answer period. If you ask a question and you have an answer. I know we're taking a little extra time, but that's good. It's good that we're having this discussion. So we shall now move on to the next question, Director Klein. What, you asked the question or read the question, sorry? I think we touched on that.
Oops, sorry. The the next few questions follow on the first. So what? Oh, sounds good. What are the selection criteria used in our accessibility checklist items followed by staff when selecting a field trip event location to ensure full access? No barriers to participation for all students? First of all, there's a written outline of camp. In this case, camps or others, abilities to accommodate students with, and I think we heard that earlier from Superintendent Bala. Prevalent medical conditions and phylaxis, asthma, diabetes, for instance, epilepsy, not of course restricted to those, mobility challenges, wheelchairs, for instance, based on student specific needs. We recognize that it's looking to ensure it's a wheelchair barrier free, accessible washroom. Additional items to consider and look for are physical, environmental, student specific needs that they'd be provided for. To prior to acceptance of a school contract for a third party provider, they must guarantee that they can accommodate students listed by the school with special needs and medical conditions. Parents and guardians should be involved in this as well. So that that is from our policy. I'm guessing it's from excursion policy. Mr. Crowe, Superintendent Crowe?
Certainly. Superintendent Bukaij has her hand up. She's been working to revise our, had her hand up, sorry, to revise our our trip advisory or trip guidelines. Perhaps she'd be the best one to answer.
Superintendent Bukaij?
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair. Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And Superintendent Crowe is right. We're working currently on our internal guideline document and process. And we've had discussions between our departments. It's a collaborative approach between curriculum services, program services and Spec Ed services to look at the need for building a version of an internal checklist that incorporates these requirements and at least to have a process to reflect the minimum standard of accessibility requirements with a provision for special and individual student needs to be included. So that's a process that we're undertaking currently in anticipation of the needs and in response to the needs, but also in review of our policy II nineteen educational field trips.
Vice Chair Agnew, can can we just hold the?
Superintendent Bukaij said.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Superintendent Bukaij. So just a question. If that checklist does in fact exist, and I'm not doubting it does, I haven't seen it. But if that's actually there, how did Kelso get booked? For, I'm asking a legitimate question. That's a venue that was booked. It's an issue. There's a checklist that's already in the policy. Saving that it is being revised, that is an existing procedure. How did Kelso get booked if that is a checklist that is being utilized to book these venues? Who does who did the checklist? Who does the site visit? And also respectfully, again, I hear that you're engaging with curriculum, with Spec Ed and with other departments. Who is your person with lived experience that is on those committees? Who has actually given you that type of feedback and that kind of advice? And I hope there's someone there. I'd love to hear who it is. Because I know that CF doesn't participate in those conversations. So the first question is, if that's being used, how did Kelso get booked? And second one is, is who else is on there that's providing that that lens? And are these checklists shared and enforced at all the schools with all the admin?
Okay, thank you, Vice Chair Agnew. I'm going to stay focused on the on this discussion. I know, I know, I know we have questions. It's not a discussion. It's open question period. All right, please send us the questions. We get answers from staff. And we will get the answers. Trustees, trustees have a right to get the answers and trustees will get the answers. So questions have been asked, staff has responded. Let's move on. Let's not get into a discussion. So so Director Klein, the answers to Vice Chair Agnew's question, can we get them circulated to all the trustees? And to the person asking the question, can we get that get that done? But this is going to become a big discussion otherwise and we'll not move forward. But this is going to become a big discussion otherwise, and we'll not move forward. So can we have that done, Director Klein?
Yeah, the answer to the question is yes, absolutely. We said that earlier. I think this came up earlier. This has come up, this has come up. And I recognize questions are stemming from one question. And the commitment was made that we would review this so that we could learn from any mistakes, if there were any. And so that we could, again, reflect what we want from, from our learners and everybody else, learn from our mistakes and move forward. But I would like to first of all, understand if there were and understand the, the depth and the breadth of them. So I don't, I'm not, I don't understand it fully at this point, whether or not, um, there was any, and if so, to what extent? Because I haven't had a chance to even look into this. We heard this moments before we began the meeting.
Right, that's fine. So we, we'll proceed with question number three. We'll ask the question, we'll get staff to answer. If we need further information and further clarification, staff will get together at some later point and provide the answers to all trustees, as well as the person asking the question. So question number three, Director Klein. Trustee Guzzo?
Thank you through, Mr. Chair. I just, I have a clarifying question. I just, I understand there was a checklist referenced. Where do I find that checklist? Is it, because it's not on the procedure, it's not on the policy? Couldn't I, I know it was referenced. So I'm just asking where the checklist is.
So we'll get that answer to you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Where is the checklist? Is it on, is it on the policy or procedure?
Point of order. I'm not understanding how this is continuing. We have open question period, and you did explain that we will get the responses. I think there's other questions that also need to be addressed.
Trustee Carabella, your point of order is well taken. So Trustee Guzzo, we'll stay focused on the question and answer period. You have a question, you asked your question. Staff will get back to you on your question. The, the, the priority is the questions asked by our RAP peers, which are being asked right now, and we're going to give them an answer. Question number three, Director Klein?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, Mr. Chair. The, the question that follows is before authorizing a field trip event, which, what process or checklist does each individual principal follow to ensure the location, the activities allow for the active participation of all students, of all abilities? The answer is that the principal reviews the camps outlined for supporting the student's specific needs. And in terms of a checklist, the list, because student needs can vary to such a broad extent, those needs are based on the student's needs. So a checklist would involve the difference of, it would be, it would be particular to certain students. I don't know if there is a precise checklist for, for this.
Okay, so if you want to ask staff for this checklist information? Okay. Superintendent Ballow, would you know the checklist and what's the reference you talked about? Sorry, Superintendent, Superintendent Bakai?
Thank you and through you. Yeah, thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. So we're, we don't have, sorry, we don't have a specific checklist at this time. There are checklists that principals determine based on the needs of their students, but it's certainly something that, when I referred earlier to our departments, that we have been talking about in terms of next steps, especially when it comes to our out-of-classroom trip guidelines. One of the things trustee, Vice Chair Agnew did ask was about Kelso, and I'm not aware of the checklist or how the site was determined.
The response that we were able to articulate as a staff is that we haven't relied on fixed list sites. Fixed list as sites can change your facilities without notification. That's sort of a, I guess there's a fluidity to that. Increased accountability, again, when there is a third party is required to ensure information. The most current principal and trip supervisor are required to go through the process of vetting the site with each trip based on the needs of the, of the students. So I'm just reading some of the, the response that we had put together. Our departments have had discussions regarding the need to build an internal checklist. It's something that we would look at to creating in the near future.
Thank you, Director Klein. So there's four questions. Staff can work on the response sent to the person who sent it. And have your own internal discussions. That'd be great. We took a good deal of time, but that's okay. So we have some more questions, Director Klein? We received last minute. Just before the meeting? Yes. Two minutes, okay. Oh, so there are about 11 questions. No.
There are a few, yes.
Yes. Let's read the questions now and then get back to the.
Mr. Chair, I have them. So we have the questions. And again, these came in just under the wire. And I would ask, we do have some responses from some of our senior team, but I will start with them and I'll, I will, um, shine the spotlight on, on our, my colleagues as we go along. First question, what was the cost of having legal counsel, quote unquote, present at the July Special Board meetings, as well as consultations regarding the Code of Conduct process, review and release of related reports? What's the estimated cost of having legal counsel present at this evening's, uh, meeting? And I, this will go to Superintendent Loffs, but I do have a bit of an answer right now that was sent in. In July, there was one hour or $500 net of HST rebate. First invoice included additional items that were not part of the Code of Conduct, and so that, that was taken into consideration. And I think it's also something we can get back on in terms of the, the logistics and the details of that. Second invoice was for 2,500 net of the HST debate, rebate, not debate, excuse me. In terms of the final part of it, this evening, it's at the point that I had the response. It was unknown, as it's happened tonight, but at that point, which wasn't nearly even through where we'd been, it was $500.
Thank you, Director Klein.
Point of order, and I'm sorry, point of order?
Yes, Trustee Ohan Chenara?
And I'm, I, I really would sit here all night and listen to the questions, but 13.4, if I'm reading it correctly, and we need to follow the rules, I'm a rule follower. The open question period will last a maximum of 10 minutes. So my interpretation is this whole question period is 10 minutes maximum in our own bylaws.
Yes, yes, Trustee Ohan Chenara, your point of order is well accepted. We have crossed the threshold of 10 minutes. We shall stop now at this point in time, the open question period. Director Klein and his team will get back to the. Director, trustee, I'm not sure which trustee is online, but I have the floor right now. So Director Klein and his staff will formulate the answers to these questions. They shall be provided to the person who asked the questions, as well as it would be part of the minutes for the next board meeting. Trustees will have a response to the questions too. So with that.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, point of order again.
Yes.
We have to look at both sides of it. That's my, in the bylaw, it also says that each question only is two minutes.
Yes.
And we've extended that period on the original question. So I think we have to make a decision. We're not following these specifically. That question was more than two minutes. So the 10 minutes, I think, kind of goes out the window as well. We have to look at both sides. So.
I agree with that.
So I think we need to continue.
Would you, would you, would trustees be okay with continuing the open question period?
Yes, I was going to suggest that as well. Thank you.
Then trustees, I shall take back my, what I said about moving on. And so, Director Klein, let's go to question number two.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and through you, Mr. Chair. I might be skipping over some, but I'll skip back. What was the cost of the, please give me a second. It is, but we've got it coming up in difference. So what was the cost of the safe space signage and other LGBTQ pride rainbow-related items that were provided to schools, sorry, and by schools following motion number 11121, supporting our diverse, our diverse school community? And started toggling here. The, the answer to that is it's, we don't have that readily available.
Director Klein, let's move on to the question number three.
What was the cost of providing pride flags and related accessories for all HCDSP schools in response to motion number 4322, strengthening community relationships? And the answer is approximately $2,000.
Thank you.
Back to my longer list. Sorry, yes.
Do we have any other questions?
Oh, yes.
Okay, let's go to the next question.
Oh, yes. All right. What safeguards and controls does the board have in place over board-owned social media accounts to ensure proper and appropriate usage of those accounts? In particular, in the case where there are multiple users, including individuals not employed by the board? And I would ask Superintendent Swenden for that. Lieutenant Swenden?
I think you just promoted me, but I'll take it. If you can be a doctor, I can be a superintendent. Thank you for the question, and I hope you can hear me, because it's been a little bit spotty. We do have a, a procedure in place that's on our board website, administrative procedure VI63, and it outlines the appropriate use and acceptable practices for the use of social media across our district. And it applies to all staff and trustees who are interacting on social media channels with students, families, staff, trustees, and members of the broader community. You know, and I've said this before in other meetings, social media accounts that represent a school or a classroom, program, department, et cetera, viewed as extension of our school board. And as such, any content and activity must maintain a sense of professionalism and reflect our mission, vision, and values. So in terms of the safeguards that are in place, outlined in the procedure, any new accounts require approval of the school administrator, in the case of a classroom account, or approval by strategic communications, in the case of a school, department, and program account. Strategic communications, we do provide training for new social media administrators associated with school or system accounts, including a review of the procedure itself and tips on best practices. And this is especially important when an account has multiple administrators. When and if concerns are raised about social media activity involving an account managed by a school or HCDSP staff, we work with the school administrator or the superintendent to investigate the concern. And the procedure does have, provide latitude to terminate an account where warranted. And I'll also note that we do keep in communications, we keep a running list of login credentials for each school account that would allow us to take over the account if it ever became necessary. So I hope I've responded to that. And I can provide that to Rosie for inclusion in the minutes.
Director Klein, can you go to the next question?
Mr. Chair, I can. And through you, Mr. Chair. The next question is, what was the rationale for budgeting an additional human rights officer in addition to the three plus one administrative position already required by motion 11922, expansion of Human Rights and Equity Department? And I'm going to turn that over to Superintendent Olman.
Superintendent Olman?
Thank you and through you, Mr. Chair. My apologies. I'm working through a voice loss right now. Um, are you able to hear me okay? Okay. So I think my, my response to that would be that the roles were separate and distinct, and that the Human Resource Services Equity Officer was separate from that of the Human Rights and Equity Department. Those were separate from the motion. It was through the budget process. So that's what I would just offer is that the roles are varying, and the responsibilities will be varying as well.
Thank you. There was a motion, Director Klein, to add that stuff. So next question, Director Klein?
Next question is, how many full-time positions have been added to the Human Rights and Equity Department since motion 11922 was passed on April 5th, 2022, and at what cost? And I would ask that this be taken by Mr. Superintendent Loffs?
I think I see Ms. Jeraman on the screen there. I think she's, she would like to take that. Ms. Jeraman, would you like to answer that? Okay.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I can begin to answer that. We're looking forward to adding two staff to the Human Rights and Equity Office. We're in the final, final stages of completing the process.
Ms. Jeraman, Director Klein?
Mr. Chair, that is the end of our questions. The, the last two were ones that we had brought up earlier when, uh, Mr. Superintendent Loffs gave his responses. So we are done.
Thank you. Thank you to you and staff for answering the questions. We'll follow the process for open question period. We have a policy on that and how to be responded. Moving on to the next order of business, which is in camera, we do not have to go in camera, resolution regarding absentees. Do we have any absentees? I think we're all present today. No absentees today. So we shall move on to the next order of business, which is adjournment and closing prayer. Trustee Ohan Chenara, may I have a motion to adjourn first? Looking for a mover?
I'll move it.
Trustee Ohan Chenara moves. Looking for a second. Trustee Murphy, all in favor? Anybody opposed? Saying none, the motion carries. Trustee Ohan Chenara, could in our leaders in the closing prayer.
I will, and with pleasure. Please, let's make the sign of our faith. Amen of the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, thank you for walking with us through the seasons of our lives, for the winter when we are held safe in your arms through the darkness, for the hope of spring as we are filled with new promises and life, for summertime full of warmth and color, and for autumn days as leaves fall to seed new growth. You are always with us. Amen. Name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, everyone, for a great meeting. Good night.